Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. We'll call a regularly scheduled board meeting to order at 5:03 PM. Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a todos. Vamos a empezar con nuestra reunión en esta tarde. Si usted necesita un intérprete, tenemos intérpretes disponibles. Por favor, levante la mano, déjenos saber, déjale saber un empleado, le podemos ayudar con intérpretes en esta tarde. If you do need an interpreter, we do have interpreters available in several languages. Please let one of our staff members know, and we'll have an interpreter for you. So just let somebody know. We'll make sure that we have interpretation available for you. Again, good afternoon. Welcome. It's so great to see all of you. Welcome, Board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff.
It's just like, oh, you're reading contracts. But no, you can manage the things.
Oh, if we could just mute there. Thank you. Welcome to all of our guests who are here present with us. Glad to have you here, both in person and online. Thank you for joining us today. We've got a lot on our agenda today, so we're going to jump right in and get started. I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We respect, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome, everybody. Thanks for joining us today. With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve today's regular agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. All right, next agenda item under 1D. This is one that I don't want to do today, but we have to. Board, as you recall, we do have a letter of resignation from our great friend and colleague, board colleague Ms. Drew, who is with us today. She's not up here on the dais with us, but she is out in the audience. Unfortunately, she has submitted her letter of resignation to us after her eight years of service on the board and over 30 years of service to Kansas City, Kansas. Ms. Drew, it has been an honor and a pleasure to get to work with you. Just, I guess, a moment of privilege, just to say it's been an honor and a privilege to get privileged to get to work alongside you, to learn from you. When I first came in back in 2020, I can't tell you how much I learned from you, watching you as board president back then and your entire tenure on the board. And I so appreciate and value you as a person, as a leader, and everything that you've given to this community. Thank you on behalf of the Board of Education, this district, and just personally. I can't tell you how grateful I am for you, for all that you've given, and we'll continue to give. We expect to see you around. You may not be up here at the dais, but we expect to see you around, just as committed as you are. So thank you for all that you continue to do. Before we move, take action on the letter of resignation. I'd open it up in case any other board members would like to share any words to Ms. Drew. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Well, I just want to thank you for your service. And we go back 100 years when you were my student. So, thank you.
Ms. Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Ms. Drew and I, we go way back. We taught social studies together. I was on National Geographics. She was on the Economic Committee. And we shared ideas. We went to different conventions. We did lesson plans. I said, hey, this works. You got to try this. And she would tell me, this works. You got to try this. So we're proud of you. We love you. And in the words of the great Stevie Wonder, these three words, "We love you, my sister."
Mr. Marlin.
I want to say thank you, Ms. Maxine Drew, for being the lady you are, the woman you are, and the person you are and the short time that we have shared together, although I've known you prior, too. I'm going to miss you. I'm happy for you. You go in your future endeavors, but I'm going to miss you. So God is good all the time, and all the time, God is good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. And as a token, as a small token of the Board's appreciation, we do have some flowers here for you that we will share with you. We're just so grateful for all that you have done for our district. And as everyone said, we love you. And I know Dr. Stubblefield wants to share something as well.
Okay. Tonight, we pause to honor eight years of dedication, vision, and heart. Eight years of showing up, not just in meetings, but in moments that matter. Eight years of listening with compassion, leading with purpose, and lifting up every voice at the table. Ms. Drew, your service has been a steady light, guiding, grounding, and growing us. And so we offer your gift, a piece of student art. It's hands of many shades, joined together, reaching, supporting, creating something stronger together, because that's what you've done. You've helped build something that belongs to all of us, and for that, we say thank you deeply, proudly.
Now officially, we're to deserve a motion to accept a letter of resignation from Ms. Maxine Drew.
So move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith.
Randy Lopez.
Yes, and we love you, Ms. Drew.
Robert Marlin Jr.
We love you, Ms. Drew, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page. And as has been said before, we love you, Ms. Drew. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen. And Dr. Nguyen, and we go back.
Motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Drew. Okay, we will continue with our agenda. If we can keep moving on. We've got lots of celebrations. And Ms. Drew, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but you get a free pass. You can leave anytime you want to. The rest of us, I guess, are begrudgingly held here captive for a while. Not for this portion of the meeting, but for the rest, so. But thank you. Next, we get some great awards and recognitions this afternoon as we recognize several scholars and employees for some amazing contributions. First up, we have our recognition of Gold Seal of Bili literacy. And I believe Mr. Amaya or someone from the team will be coming forward.
Okay, good evening, members of the Board. My name is Alexandria Rain, and I'm the World Language Curriculum and Instruction Coach for the district. My role in the Diploma Plus College and Careers Instructional Program allows me to coordinate opportunities for high school students to earn the Seal of Bili literacy. I am honored to be here tonight to celebrate a remarkable group of students who have received this prestigious award through demonstrations of high levels of proficiency in speaking, reading, writing, and listening in English and another world language. The two levels of the Seal of Bili literacy indicate how clearly the student can communicate in a language and the various job opportunities that level of proficiency will allow. The silver seal represents an intermediate proficiency level, while the gold seal represents an advanced level, both of which result in the students earning the seal. Since I began my role in the 2022-2023 school year, the opportunity to earn the Seal of Bili literacy has expanded from only IB World Language students at Sumner Academy to students across all high schools. With strong support from World Language staff, the Multilingual Education Services Department, Diploma Plus, and instructional coaches, access has grown significantly. I want to draw your attention to the screen. You'll note that while the number of IB recipients in yellow remains steady, the number of students earning the seal through other pathways in orange continues to rise, reflecting the success of these expanded opportunities. Also of importance is the increase in languages students are testing in. This year, students tested in 10 languages: Swahili, Somali, Karen, Koreni, Hakachin, Tagalog, Burmese, and Kenyewanda, in addition to Spanish and French, showcasing the rich linguistic diversity present in our schools. As you can see, students received the silver seal level in Spanish, Kenyewanda, Tagalog, and Hakachin. Earning the Gold Seal of Bili literacy is a significant academic accomplishment, showing each student's commitment, perseverance, and their pride in their cultural and linguistic heritage. This year, all recipients of the Gold Seal earned the award in Spanish. So I'd like to take a moment to both ask those students, if you're present, to make your way forward. If you're a recipient of the Seal of Bili literacy, yes, will. Yes, you can come forward. And as you're doing so, I'd just like to address you and your families who are here in your native language. This distinction opens the door to greater opportunities in college and careers, and it signals to universities and employers that these students bring valuable communication and cultural skills to any environment. It's a privilege to stand with these students and their families, representing the beauty and value of diverse community. And now we'll recognize the students who have earned the Gold Seal of Bili literacy. Diana Corona Salinas. Itza Rodriguez Cardea. Itza Garcia Hernandez. Diana Duron. Jairi Lemos Ramos. Joseline Barajas Nunes. And Leslie Pesquera Interiano. Felicidades. Congratulations.
Congratulations to those scholars. What a great thing to continue to see that program continue to grow and as we put more emphasis and continue to invest in that and in our students, we will continue to see those numbers rise. So thank you to everyone who supports that team and those students. Next, we have another special recognition, Arcadia State Music Recognitions. We get to celebrate some more scholars this evening.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Burns, and I'm the Assistant Director of Fine Arts, Performing Arts, and Physical Education here for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing our Arcadia State Groups and our All-State Music Students. Our performing arts students spend spring semester prepping for Acacia festivals in the areas of voice, band, and orchestra. Students perform in small ensembles, large ensembles, and as soloists. We have also, we are also recognizing those students who have auditioned and been accepted into All-State Groups in the state of Kansas. First, we're going to recognize the Argentine Middle School students. Our only two middle school students who are accepted into Vocal All-State Choirs, Mildred Perez Gonzalez, and then Maya Zumidio De La Cruz. Next, we have the F.L. Schlegel Concert Band.
Next, we have Mr. Jedediah Connor, who earned a one at the Acacia 4A Solo Ensemble Event. Outstanding rating.
Hi. From J.C. Harmon, we have Clyde Cook. And we're, sorry, Raul, Raul. I suddenly forgot how to say your name. Raul Cerritos, both with outstanding ratings on their cello and bass solos.
Hi, I'm Becky Thomas. I'm the choir director at Sumner Academy. Our Corral and Unita Del Boche, that is, the United Voices of our sopranos and altos from Corral and Bela Boche, both got one ratings at state contests. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you for approving our trip to Chicago, where we got silver ratings there as well. I thought you might like to hear from some of the seniors, so I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Miles Dean. I'm the Corral Vice President.
I'm Jason Narevlo. I'm a senior at Academy and a part of the group that, Basotanore and Corral, that won these awards.
Hi, my name is Lucy Meek. I am the president of Corral, and I'm a part of Corral, Unita Del Boche, and Bela Boche.
Hello, my name is Joshua Lor, and I'm a part of Corral and the Basotanore that participated in these festivals.
I am Zee Clark. I am a part of Corral, Bela Boche, and Unita Del Boche.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Sweeten, and I'm the Sumner Academy Orchestra Director. And we got at state large group, straight ones. And I would like some of my seniors to introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Leo Solano. I am the Honorable Treasurer and a bass player in Symphonic Orchestra.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Pittman. I am a member of the Symphonic Orchestra, and my duet got a one at Regionals and State.
Hello, my name is Allison Clay, and I'm a violinist in Symphonic Orchestra.
Good afternoon. I'm Diego Morales. I am a violist in the Symphonic and Camaroza Orchestra.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Murphy, and I'm a cellist in the Symphonic Orchestra.
Hello, my name is Alessandra Vera. I'm a violinist of Symphonic Orchestra.
I'm back. Now recognizing our solos and small ensembles. You already met Zee Clark, who got a one on her solo. You already met Lucy Meek, who got a one on her solo. The others couldn't be here. Evelyn Robinson, Jamie Chateau. But they're also members of Bela Boche, who got a one. And you heard from members of Basotanore, who also got a one. So congratulations to them.
Hi, I'm Mark Keltner. I'm the band director at Sumner Academy. We had a concert last night, and I already mispronounced half my kids wrong, so I try not to do that twice in a 24-hour period. So the first thing we're going to recognize them for is receiving ones on their solos and ensembles. And they're going to tell you which ones when they introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Yaretz Gawana. I'm a junior French hornist. And I got a one at solo and ensemble.
Hello, my name is Alexis Salinas Gonzalez. I'm a tubist at Sumner Academy. I got a one on a solo at solo ensemble.
Howdy. My name's Martin Jimenez, and I was part of the Six Ten Ensemble.
Hello, my name's Braden Baptiste, and I'm a junior at Sumner Academy, and I'm part of the Small Brass Ensemble. They got a one.
Okay, and the Sumner Orchestra kids are back, and I will let them do all the introductions of solo and ensemble results.
I would like to recognize Chamber first. I know it's at the bottom. We did get a one, and this group was amazing. And then, once again, my duet, we got a one. My duet is Omani Murphy. He's here tonight, too.
Hello, I'm Leo Solano. I'd like to recognize Primavera Quintette, which got a one, as well as my solo for the bass, the harp, and then the duet for double bass, which all got a one.
Hi, I'm Diego. I would like to recognize the last two, Bertie Ticks, with his bass solo, receiving an outstanding rating, and Christian Gallegos, with his cello solo, getting an outstanding rating.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mark Keltner. I'm still the band director at Sumner Academy. We had three of our students from before. The slides didn't get in the right order, who are also in All-State Band. So you three, Uretzi, Alexis, and Martin were also members of the All-State Band. And Lapita Guzman is a bass player, and she couldn't be here this evening. Thank you.
I almost forgot. We have three that were in the All-State Choir. Brielle Jefferson couldn't be here tonight. Lucy Meek is here. You've met twice before. And Evelyn Robinson couldn't be here, but congratulations.
Our student from Washington High School that made Vocal All-State, Alexandria Rizley Kincaid.
Hi, my name is Angela Zhao. I'm from Wyandotte High School. And this is our fourth year in a row receiving a one outstanding rating for being on grade level with our orchestra. Representing Wyandotte are two of my seniors and leaders from the orchestra.
Good evening. My name is Katmiel Santos-Guerra. I am a senior at Wyandotte High School, and I am first chair violinist.
Hello, my name is Jalen. I'm first bassist at Wyandotte High School, and I'm a senior.
And last but not least, we have three people who made their one ratings for solo, solos. And that would be Leonella Alvarez- solos, and that would be Leonella Alvarez on cello, and that would be Isaac Gaetan for viola, and that would be Kat Santos, who is up here already. They did an outstanding job.
Next, I'm going to recognize the band soloists. Their slide is not up here, but we have Alonso Espinoza, trumpet, the outstanding rating. Devante Kajani, percussion, outstanding rating, and Lungaza Amisi, baritone saxophone, outstanding rating.
Good evening, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, Board administrators, and guests. I'm Jackie Hunt. I'm the director of vocal music at Wyandotte High School. I'd like to introduce our ladies and gentlemen that got ones. They're going to tell you a little bit about themselves.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Sanchez. I'm a sophomore at Wyandotte High School, and I received a one at vocal solo at Regionals and State.
Hello, my name is Alonso Scamilla, and I am a senior at Wyandotte High School, and I received a one at State.
Hello, my name is Juan Mota Martinez, and I am our choir club president. I am a senior this year. I made both NEKMEA and KMEA, and I got a one for vocal solo and vocal ensembles at Regionals and State.
Hello, my name is Jamari Basie. I'm a sophomore at Wyandotte High School, and I got a one at State for vocalist.
The gentlemen that are standing up there, plus this young man here, also got a one at State for their men's ensemble. This is Alexander.
Hello, my name is Alexander Bormel, and I am a senior at Wyandotte High School, and I am a part of the Chambers Singers Ensemble Men that received a one at State.
And one more honor. Juan Mota Martinez was selected to the KMEA All-State Honor Choir this year as a senior.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of our scholars and our staff and families who support you and all that you do. Thank you. You've got great talent, so if you ever want to go see them, find out, look at the calendar, and go watch the performances at the schools, and let's continue to support each of our scholars when they're outperforming. Thank you. Okay, next, we have our Spring Attendance Recognition. Would ask invite Dr. Sarah Lucero to the podium.
All right. Good evening, Board members, President Lopez, and Vice President Russell, and Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, and our other esteemed board members and community members. In Kansas City, Kansas, we believe that success starts when our students are present and in school, and in daily participation and regular engagement. As part of our continued commitment to reducing absenteeism and promoting a welcoming school culture, Attend to Achieve recently launched the Spring Attendance Campaign. Additionally, in the fall, we had a "We Are Better When You Are Here" campaign, and that was during Attendance Awareness Month. Both efforts focused on fostering a culture where students feel seen, supported, and motivated to attend school every single day. Both campaigns are a reminder of the vital role that attendance play for our students to be successful. Then, in the spring campaign, we highlighted students that had demonstrated good or approved attendance, as well as those who have contributed in creating a positive and welcoming school environment. Schools nominated students each week, and one name per an elementary school, middle and high school was drawn and recognized district-wide. Tonight, we are celebrating our district-wide student winners first. So if I could have our elementary student winners, please come up to the front when your name is called. So we have Gianna Garcia Ramos, Samaya Newton, Jaylen Rivera, Maive Harris, Envy Adams, Benton Washington, and Nicole Pilar Reyes. Thank you. And that is all of our elementary. We'll pause for a picture. Thank you. Okay, our middle school, Alexis Inslo. Sarah Ai? I'd been practicing with her. Sarah Ai. Soraya. Her and I practice a lot of times, so let me do it again. Soraya Smith. Timothy Phillips. Julie Hanem. And Luis Guerra. Okay, for our high school, Eliana Adame. Harley Flores Chavez. Angel Hernandez. Ismerelda Valesquez. Liaja Hill Lowry. Additionally, tonight, I'm very excited we have one school that we get to celebrate a remarkable achievement. Now, with their fourth year in the Attendance Learning Network, Lindberg continues to lead with a purpose. If we could have Lindberg come up. The impact of their campus has been consistent these, over the years. Their work is clear. Their chronic absenteeism has dropped from 57% in the year 2021 to 25% today. For those of you who need the math like me, that is 31.7%. That reflects their commitment to meaningful, sustained change. It takes time, but you stood the course. From celebrating individual and class-wide successes to promoting inclusive culture and creativity, engaging your community through newsletters and social media efforts, they are truly making a difference. Let's give it up for Lindberg and their attendance. And that concludes our attendance celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucero. Congratulations to all of our scholars and your families. Showing up is great, just to be in the classroom and continue to learn. So thanks for all your work. Thank you to everyone who is investing to make sure that our scholars are at school. Next, we will hear from Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
And I'm handing it over to Dr. Campbell to recognize our Challenge Award-winning schools.
Good evening, President Lopez.
Good evening.
Vice President Russell, members of the Board and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield. I am Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and I'm honored to stand here and share that five of our schools have received a prestigious recognition from the state of Kansas called the Challenge Award. I am going to tell you a little bit about the Challenge Award, but alongside me are our elementary executive directors of schools, so I'm going to have those who are representing the schools to come up first. I will call up Emerson Elementary School, and the EDF School will provide the award, and then we will go into what exactly is the Challenge Award. Emerson Elementary School. Francis Willard Elementary School. Frank Rushton, excuse me, Elementary School. New Stanley Elementary School. And Whittier Elementary School. The Challenge Awards celebrate schools that are achieving at high levels on state assessments. Despite serving a large number of students who face significant challenges, including poverty, systemic barriers related to race, and socioeconomic status, as you can see, this award isn't just about strong test scores, it is also about exceptional performance in the face of adversity. What makes this recognition even more meaningful is that it highlights what we already know to be true about Kansas City, Kansas, public schools. Our students can do and do excel when we believe in them, support them, and hold them to high expectations. Each year, a rigorous statistical analysis is conducted by the state, factoring in academic performance in math and reading, the percentage of students from low economics households, and the proportion of students from diverse backgrounds. For high schools, graduation rates are also considered, and for elementary and middle schools, chronic absenteeism plays a critical role. To be eligible, schools must have a free and reduced lunch population that exceeds the state average of approximately 46%. From there, the top 100 schools statewide are identified and then sorted into Kansas State Board of Education districts for recognition. So this award affirms the tireless work of our educators, the resilience of our students, the power of high expectations, especially in communities often underestimated. So please join me and the executive directors of elementary school again to congratulate the five schools in our district that have earned this distinguished award. Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you. Next, I'd invite Mr. Dom DeRosa, who will present our next award, our KNEA State Award. Good evening, Mr. DeRosa.
Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Russell, Dr. Stubblefield, and the Board. Thank you for giving us this evening. Today, we are proud to recognize two outstanding individuals who embody the spirit, dedication, and values of public education and union advocacy. To help us do this, I'd like to introduce an elementary teacher, our Vice President of KNEA, Kimberly Howard.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and recognize two of your staff members. The Kansas NEA HCR Award is given to an individual, school, education association, or organization working in the field of human and civil rights within the last five years. These nominations might be for one or more of the following areas: protecting the rights of others in such areas as child abuse, sexual abuse, missing children, civil rights, discrimination, et cetera; working to bring about improved interpersonal and/or intergroup relations; working toward improvement in board-staff relationships; working for further understanding and appreciation of multi-ethnic groups and other groups which suffer discrimination; establishing cooperative working relationships with other groups concerned with education; and promoting educational quality. The winner of the 2025 KNEA Human and Civil Rights Award is Michael Rebny. He was nominated by Elise Edwards, so I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about his accomplishments.
Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, President Randy Lopez, Board members, and guests. My name is Elise Edwards, and I'm a member of NEA KCK. Robert F. Kennedy once stated that, "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I see things as they could be and ask why not." These words directly reflect the work and commitment that recipient of the KNEA Human Rights Award possesses in his fight for social and economic justice. The honoree for the 2025 Human Rights Award is Michael Rebny, a proud member of KCK NEA and KNEA Social Justice Caucus. Michael is an active member and organizer of Showing Up for Racial Justice, better known as SURGE, a national organization that brings hundreds and thousands of people to promote racial and economic justice. Through SURGE KC Education Division, Michael developed partnerships with students, parents, and school districts, and other community members by proposing a list of 12 equity demands to bring social justice and equity within several school districts across state lines in Kansas and Missouri. The plan calls for every staff member, regardless of title or position, to participate in diversity trainings, to transform curriculum, school, and classroom libraries to include diverse and inclusive books, to offer high school courses in ethnic studies and history, and ensure equitable representation in honors, AP, and gifted programs, et cetera. The plan also calls for our annual review of each district's progress. Michael was instrumental in USD 500, implementing a diversity, inclusion, and equity program that provided training for all educators. Michael also took part in writing the mission statements for the district DEI program and participating as a presenter for their programs. In addition, Michael sponsored several Teach the Truth rallies, a Day of Action, in partnership with the Zen Education Project, the NAACP, and the KNEA in Wyandotte County. Last summer, NEA Today featured Michael Rebny's participation in the Teach the Truth Day of Action. Michael's passion to bring about social change led him to run for office in his community. He proudly served as a council member for the city of Roland Park from 2020 to 2024. As a council member, Michael Rebny spoke on behalf of undocumented community members by opposing House Bill 2717. Michael is a true champion for human and civil rights. Some men see things as they are and ask why. Michael sees things as they could be and asks why not. Thank you, Michael, for your strength, courage, integrity, and leadership. And I probably call him my son of another mother.
Yeah, Mr. Rebny.
All right, we have one more award winner, too. The KNEA Educational Support Professional Award was established to recognize contributions by an educational support professional member for their efforts to advance the KNEA and ESP activities within the association in one or more of the following areas. Innovations to support the day-to-day educational process. Professional achievements in their classification. Involvement in promoting public education in the community. An enhancement of educational support professionals' image in the association, worksite, or community. And the winner of this award then becomes our nomination at the national level with NEA. So the winner will be recognized next spring by NEA. The winner of the 2025 KNEA ESP of the Year Award is Matthew Ritchie. And Matt was nominated by Dom DeRosa, so he's going to tell you a little bit about his accomplishments.
Matt Ritchie is a music technician at IARC, and he's an organizer, advocate, and his contributions have significantly enriched Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, community, and the broader Kansas City music scene. His dedication to supporting students, staff, and fine arts professionals demonstrate his unwavering commitment to education and the arts. Since joining KCKPS in 2015, Matt has played a vital role in maintaining, repairing instruments, fostering strong relationships with the fine arts instructors, and advocating for the needs of both students and educators. Even before his involvement in the association, he worked tirelessly to support his colleagues and the district. Beyond his role in the school system, Matt is an active Kansas City Music Community member, contributing to various local causes, including Midwest Music Foundation. While he does not hold a formal position within the foundation, he profoundly values its mission and has witnessed firsthand its incredible impact on local musicians. Matt's leadership within the association has been exemplary. Upon joining, he immediately sought ways to contribute and was soon highly recommended for the position of Building Representative for the IARC facility in '21. Notably, he was the first classified staff member to join the locals organizing and member recruitment team long before the local was designated as a targeted organizing. His effort has been instrumental in strengthening our educational support professionals' representation within the association. Additionally, Matt has served as a year-round organizer, consistently working to enhance member engagement and advocacy efforts. During the past two election cycles, he has also served as an active member of our local PAC team, interviewing potential school board members and helping shape endorsements on behalf of the association. His dedication to a fair representation, strong leadership, have made a lasting impact on both the classified and certified members of our association. Matt Ritchie embodies the values of advocacy, leadership, and community support. He is known for his ability to navigate complex and even confrontational situations, guiding individuals towards calm and favorable resolutions. His work has strengthened the fine arts community in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and elevated the voices of our classified staff within the district and the association. Suppose you ask our state organizing team members, local leadership, or the fine arts staff, they will all echo the same sentiment. Matt is a leader, a problem solver, and a tireless advocate for students and educators alike. These reasons were the reasons I wholeheartedly recommended on behalf of myself and our executive board, Matt Ritchie, for his recognition, and his dedication to leadership continues to profoundly affect our schools, our association, and our community. Congratulations, Matthew.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Thank you, Kimberly, for sharing today. What an accomplishment by our staff and our team. We've got great members here, so thank you. Congratulations, and best of luck at Nationals. Thank you. All right, next, we are going to continue with our agenda with item three on our agenda. It's our community comment section. As a reminder, everyone is welcome to give comment. Please sign up Monday at noon, the Monday before the board meeting, to speak. You will have three minutes. Please make sure that we have your contact information so that we may reach out to you if there's any follow-up that we need to have with you. A member of our leadership team will reach out to you and have any follow-up actions that need to come from that. Please make sure we have your contact information. State your name when you begin speaking, and your time will start at three minutes. I will give you a little note when you have about 30 seconds left and then let you know when your time is up. With that, I would invite Mr. Scott Harding to the podium. Harding? Next, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Ji-Hong Wang to the podium. You can correct me with your pronunciation of your name.
It's Jia-Hong, Jia-Hong Wang. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jia-Hong Wang. I have been a language teacher for 12 years. I came to KCK as a teaching fellow, and I served ESL students at Yandotte for the last eight years. I earned my National Board Certificate last year, and this spring I finished my PhD at KU, and I will begin a new chapter as a TESO professor at the University of Wisconsin in the fall. Before I leave, I want to share some reflections and offer a few suggestions based on my experiences as an ESL teacher at KCK. First, I urge the people who make the curriculum decisions to be in the classroom to actually teach students, even just one class per semester. This will compensate for our teacher shortage and also provide them with an opportunity to gain a realistic understanding of our students and create a more equitable and practical curriculum. For example, over the past eight years, the multilingual department gradually reduced English language courses for our ESL students. When I first began teaching here, we had 11 direct and sheltered English courses. But today, even newcomers can only receive five English courses, less than half of what we used to offer. I understand budget constraints are real, but in a district where nearly half of our students are English learners, our decisions must reflect our student population, and we must prioritize and expand access to meaningful English language instruction, including more, not fewer, language courses after school support, weekend programs, and enrichment activities. Language learners deserve a robust and consistent path toward academic success. Second, I want to highlight the often unseen workload of our teachers at KCK. Many educators in our district go above and beyond giving their time to support students and their families, often without pay or even acknowledgement. Take ESL teachers as an example. In addition to teaching, we are responsible for a long list of administrative tasks, including screening newcomers, managing KELPA testing, updating individual learning plans, et cetera. In a large school like Yandotte, which serves more than 800 ESL students, this work becomes overwhelming. Now, Yandotte has been more than just a workplace to me. It has been home. I'm very fortunate to work with a strong administrative team and a highly collaborative ESL team.
Thirty seconds.
But at the district level, thank you, at the district level, the only support that the multilingual department provides is communicating due dates for compliance tasks. So if we want to retain teachers, on the one hand, we need to recognize and compensate teachers' hidden labor. On the other hand, we need to also, well, the district office, especially the instructional coaches, should build positive relationships and provide strong support to our buildings. Please note that I share all of this with my deep love and respect for KCK, Yandotte, and our incredible ESL students. I hope to offer an honest glimpse into the reality of the classroom teaching and provide some practical suggestions. So thank you so much for listening today.
Thank you, Ms. Wang.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you so much. Yes, Ms. Brownly Page.
Can we get a copy of what she read off, please?
If you, Ms. Wang, there's a request. If you would be interested in sharing what your statement today, if you could email that to the board clerk, Ms. Smith, and then we'll make sure all the board members have that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Brownly Page. Next, I'd invite to the podium Adriana Requenes.
Hi, first I want to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak up here. Hello, my name is Adriana Requenes, and I'm here speaking today in regard to the recent changes regarding Faces Personnel in the district. As a current educator and previous student at KCKPS, I have been able to witness firsthand the importance of a strong Faces Foundation in a school dynamic. With the recent changes in the number of families Faces Personnel would have to serve, I would strongly encourage some reform around how this program will be conducted in the upcoming year. I, as a third-grade teacher with a class of 20 students, have taken the whole year to reach out to parents, communicate student needs, and learn their unique and individual family dynamic. With each family comes a unique set of experiences, and the word "family" can look different depending on the experiences or upbringing of that situation. So it can look like a grandmother being the primary caretaker of a household of five, a single mother working two jobs to make ends meet, stepparents, an older sibling, adoptive parents, the list goes on. And it's not as simple as sending a quick text message notifying families about what's going on in schools. It can be a WhatsApp message, a phone call after contract hours when a parent or guardian is off of work, or a home visit to a family who has no means of accessible transportation. These are just some of the ways myself and other educators have connected with families in our classroom. Now, tying this back to Faces, take my number of students and multiply it by 30. That's a total of 600 students, and if we assume all of these students have two guardians, that's 1,200 parents to take account of, 1,200 parents to learn, support, and connect with. I understand that with recent changes in government administration, funding can be allocated or even cut from certain departments, making it harder to make these changes. However, I strongly encourage you to provide some reform to this change, possibly creating a cohort where Faces Personnel can share ideas, support one another, and create a community where they can feel supported. Otherwise, serving a population of 600 students is an overwhelming amount that one person cannot do on their own, no matter how skilled or experienced they may be. Without intentional support, we risk burning out the very people building bridges between schools and families. Before I close, I want to highlight a few key pieces of research that speak to the power of family engagement. Dr. Karen Mapp, faculty chair at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, states that parent participation is the strongest predictor of a student's academic success regardless of race, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, or cultural background. Christina Hall, a researcher at Northwest Missouri State University, found in her 2020 study that parents want to be involved in their children's education and that student outcomes improve when families and educators work together. It's not a matter of whether they want to be involved, it's the intentional thought and action of teaching parents how to be involved in their academic child's life instead of just solely focusing on behavior. Family engagement and school climate are not separate. They're deeply connected, but true engagement is not a one-size-fits-all checklist. It's built through time, trust, and intentional relationships, especially in a district as diverse and unique as KCKPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Requenes. Ms. Requenes, sorry, same thing if you're willing to share your statement, if you could email that to the board clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith, and we'll share it with the full board as well. Thank you so much for being here. And a member of our, as I mentioned, a member of our leadership team may reach out in case there's some follow-up conversation to be had from all of those folks who spoke tonight. Great, next board, item four. We are at our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Lopez, I'd like to set aside D, like donut.
Item D.
So moved.
Moved. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item D. Any discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownly Page.
Wanda Brownly Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, the payment of bills. It's Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. And I just have one specific question and then one generic, general kind of question. The one question is about Iron Mountain. Are we, where are we with that?
So I know, and as Wayne is walking up to the podium, I know Ms. Smith has been working with Wayne on some follow-up items with Iron Mountain. They were working out final payments, I believe, and just making sure that Ms. Smith and the team had access to, make sure that they could access the database to search, to be able to search for documents. But I know Wayne's been working to try to get some follow-up and final information. Mr. Correll.
So we have paid the final bill to Iron Mountain, and our account is closed out, and we're just awaiting what they had in their custody, and it's being shipped to North Central Office so we can evaluate it. A lot of the things that they found in what was sent to Iron Mountain is like office supplies and pictures and things like that. The deliverables, the indexed inventory, and the scans, the PDF scans of the documents are also being assembled and being returned.
So for the public, could you further explain what the company did and what is the data?
Right, they scanned documents that they received, and I'm still waiting to see what they, you know, what they did and get the index so I can get it into a usable format for you all.
So for context, I don't remember exactly what year. It might have been 2020 or 2021. The board had, from our board library, several documents that were being stored over in North Central Office in a room that was not climate-controlled, and several of those documents were very, very old documents that needed to be taken care of. And so this board, minus a couple of board members, I don't think Ms. Russell or Mr. Mylan were on the board at the time, decided to work with Iron Mountain. Ms. Smith was helping us with that transition to work with them. They, we shipped all of our documents. They digitized all of those historical documents, and we're creating a searchable database for us to be able to look and find information from those documents, and they were preserving them and storing them in a climate-controlled area. So I don't remember where that was, but they were controlling that. Through the course of, over the years, I know there was some back and forth about what was being stored, what wasn't being stored. Some things were sent back because some of the items that were sent were like trophies and plaques and things that didn't need to be stored in that or digitized. So those things were returned to us.
So they've been digitized, you know, we're getting them all back, but we're also getting the digitized format of them, and we can decide what to do with them once we get them back. I just need to check and see what the final product looks like. And, you know, like I said, put it in a searchable repository.
And what's the years of this, the database?
I gotta see it. I haven't seen it yet.
And then how would one access?
Yeah, I'm gonna figure that out. It's gonna be, it's gonna be in a PDF, you'll be able to search it, and a lot of the documents that were in a decent enough format, they have optical character recognition, so you can search the contents as well.
Yeah, and there was some training provided on the software database. It's on the cloud. All the documents that were digitized are in the cloud, and they're accessible by the clerk, the deputy clerk, and there were a few, a couple of other folks who were trained, Dr. Stubblefield. There was some training provided a few years ago, I believe. Then there was some turnover at Iron Mountain, and some of the work that hadn't been completed was being worked on. So I believe an additional training was provided earlier this year and then was going to be provided again.
I wasn't part of it, and so I need to see what it is.
I'm just sharing like what I know historically. So there was some additional. So, there was some additional training that was gonna happen to make sure that the clerk and others who were supposed to have access could access those documents. And then they would search by keyword or by year in the database, and it would find all those documents that had those words or phrase or year.
So, will public have access?
No. I believe that was just for the district and for those folks who had specific access. If public wanted to access any of those documents, they would need to reach out to the board clerk.
And submit an open records request, or we have to work that out?
That would be one way, yeah, sure.
Okay, so we have yet to work that out.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Russell.
I just wanted to just make a clarifying point. I do believe, as of November 8th, your email said that there were five pallets onsite from our district store room manager. So, I just want to confirm that we have received the items. We're not awaiting anything. I do also, so that was my first point. My second point was that I wanted to say, at some point, the board, the cost to store with Iron Mountain was more than we thought was appropriate when we can store it here locally. And so, Wayne, at some point, once we have all of the ducks in the row, is going to bring something back to us to then take those items to the caves or somewhere like that where the climate...
Right. The cave is what I'm looking at. I just need confirmation.
The climate control piece, because they're here now onsite, but they cannot stay here because they will weather if they are left in the weather, so.
The unclimatized store.
Yes.
The, I am waiting confirmation, you know, there, Iron Mountain's going back to look to make absolutely sure we have everything. And I want that confirmation from them, and then we'll move everything to the cave.
Yes. I just wanted to clarify that this is not the end of this. While we have paid, we have gotten lots of, I won't say lots of credit, because I don't know if that's really what I want to say, but we've received some credit, and then we will have to have another.
It was like $12,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The second question is just for clarification, as going through the, Dr. Stubblefield, going through the payables. At what point, I mean, this is May, and I saw a lot of purchases of learning materials and books, large expenditures. How do you, how should we understand that?
The encumbrance cutoff was April 1st, May 31st. And so, schools and departments encumbered what they needed for the last few months of the year up until the end. So, there are expenses that they have to get out of the way for this year's money. You know, it's such a big operation. I don't know precisely. Is there anything that's on this list?
You know, just books, learning materials.
Spending that's gonna occur this year, and it's just the wrap-up of this year. Summer school supplies are gonna be purchased here pretty soon. And, you know, other school, you know, schools and departments are finishing up their spending for the year.
So, just, and also to clarify, some of the things are on there, like you approved, and we don't necessarily pay in a lump sum. We pay payments. So, when you go through and look at it, it may be something that we already have, but instead of paying all of it, it depends on how some things are billed. Like, I saw like Ignite Reading. That's from a grant. And it, how it's paid, it's the disbursements, whatever was agreed upon in the contract.
If you want any more detail on any one of these, just give me the check number and I can...
300,000, others 500,000. So, just wondering how that flow of expenditures, here we are, May.
You'll see it winding down. We're having our meetings with the schools now, and we're gonna do end-of-year checkout. And so, the last month of the year, you'll see the spending, you know, the last month of fiscal year, June.
Right.
You'll see the spending really taper off.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I was just gonna add, Wayne, I remember, and I think it's similar to what Dr. Stubblefield was saying, was while we may order or pay for something two or three months, or we may order something two or three months ago, oftentimes vendors, they don't send a final invoice until we have received all of the pieces of it. And so, I know there are some of those in there as well, and so I think it is a complexity. But then also, if somebody pays on a credit card, the credit card gets paid, but then the ability to go through and put all of the, to sort out all of the different things as a process before it comes to us. And so, I just know, I just wanted to notate so that no one's like, oh, we're spending 800,000 at the end of the year. There are these unique scenarios that you've also helped me understand why the money looks that way sometimes.
Well, credit card purchases too. We're telling everybody to finish the credit card purchases up before the end of this month because, you know, once we cross over into, well, isn't that, yeah, this is May.
May, June. It's at the end of the year.
The end of the year. So, once we hit the end of this month, we'll get the statement in June, and the next statement won't come until July, which means you have to use next fiscal year's money to pay it.
For that, thank you.
No, these are not credit cards. These, for your clarification, these are direct pays. And so, I understand all that, and we've gone through that 100,000 times. I was just asking...
There's a lot of payment schedules.
Right. Just asking the direct pays of, you know, I can identify them, Carnegie Learning, whatever, 800,000. So, it's not the credit card.
Right. And there might be a payment schedule on that, but if you send me precisely what you're...
Will do.
Or I'll give you a breakdown.
Will do. So, Mr. Lopez, no other questions. I'll make the motion.
Moved to, moved and seconded to approve item D. Any questions or further discussion? Bring that, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownly Page.
Wanda Brownly Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. Next board, we have a couple of reports, report tonight. Under item five, would invite Dr. Angela Wright to the podium.
As Dr. Wright is approaching, I just wanted to note, we did move the reports up in the agenda because we have students presenting, and we didn't necessarily want them to wait till the end. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Lopez, Vice President, Ms. Russell, our Superintendent, Dr. Stubblefield, and board members. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am always excited, I'm sorry, let me go back and introduce myself. I am Dr. Wright, the Director of the diploma plus college and career instructional programs. I am always excited to share how diploma plus experiences give students opportunities to apply classroom knowledge in practical, meaningful ways that prepare them for life and for graduation, life after graduation. This presentation that we are about to present to you, it aligns very well, it aligns very well with our KISA goals, our post-secondary success, and our students' individual plan of study. And so, I have behind me some wonderful students who participated in the Student Voice Ambassador through Kaufman. And let me give you a little background information about it. The Real World Learning Student Voice Program is a leadership opportunity for high school students to advocate for student agency and support the implementation of real-world learning in their schools. When authentic and effective, real-world learning student voice, they model how students, adult partnerships can drive meaningful systematic change in high school redesign. It helps students understand the educational decision-making process and how federal, state, and local governments work together. It empowers students to use their voices to influence decisions that affect their education. It encourages students to see the value of real-world application of knowledge, and it develops innovative, ethical, and thoughtful leaders. So, students from all of the high schools were nominated by their principals or staff members in their building to serve as RWL Student Voice Ambassadors through a program led by the Kaufman Foundation. Ambassadors participated in six in-person workshops to deepen their understanding of real-world learning and how to share real-world learning opportunities with fellow students, parents, and community members in their district. Each student received $1,000 for participating and for building their leadership and commitment to advancing real-world learning in their schools. So, I'm hoping that you guys have your T-shirts that we provided for you. We want you to support real-world learning, and wear your T-shirts. And I know their principals are here to see their presentations. So, I'm gonna turn it over to our students.
Oh, look at my color. We're twins. I shared it.
I got the same color. I got the same color too, Rachel.
Okay, look. Oh, okay. Thank you. Hello, I'm Virginia Bowling, a junior at Sumner Academy. And I don't think this is the fully updated version. I have done a few changes since then, but anyway. Yeah. So, when I was chosen for Student Voices, I hadn't heard of real-world learning before becoming part of it. But I learned through all the programs that my school has in place that they're, that it's very prevalent. And I am also, in fact, working on improving the community in my personal professional skills class with a client-connected project with the UG. And I was chosen at the beginning of the year by my personal professional skills teacher, Mr. Gunner, and I am taking advantage of the experiences it gives me because, well, learning about all this stuff is pretty useful. Then I learned from my friends across the different career pathways, the different ways that students at Sumner get real-world learning opportunities. So, some different activities that have been done in Sumner, these examples were from, for the business pathway, where there was a field trip to Owens Corning, which is an installation company, Urban Outfitters, KCKCC Technical Center, and then Central Solutions. So, it gave all these students different experiences in actual businesses to get an idea of what the experience is like before graduating. And then most, if not all pathways in Sumner, I don't personally know because I'm not in every single pathway. That would be insane. But most students in Sumner, most pathway students in Sumner have some kind of real-world learning opportunity that gives them the chance to work in their selected field before they hit the workforce. So, for instance, teaching pathway students, once or twice a week, they go out into real classrooms to assist teachers. Digital media pathway students, which is, I'm one of those, our teacher will sometimes give us opportunities to edit for professionals or photograph events. And then biomed students, they will go into like actual hospitals and different events that they host to get an idea of what it's like to be in the doctor's office or reception desk of a hospital. And then, so, some key insights. I have a quote. It's pretty long, so I'm just gonna read from my phone. This is from my friend Silas, who is in the teaching pathway. And he said that going into teaching, one of the biggest things I have learned with being able to work with younger kids that I couldn't learn in the classroom is that your plans will not always work the way you want them to, almost ever. You need to plan to make, to have extra time and be okay not going through everything. Flexibility is key. So, if Silas didn't have these opportunities, he would have never known what it was like. So, how, so, how students are learning about real-world learning? Well, they aren't really, because we're not using that exact language. It's very widespread through like all the different pathway opportunities, but it's just not talked about enough. And so, what really surprised, that was what really surprised me about it, is that most students are taking part in these different experiences. They just don't realize it. So, most have had at least one. So, people who are benefiting the most are students who have the time to leave school, to go on like field trips and different extracurriculars, and then students who are very dedicated to their pathway, who often will like put aside time for these different things. So, people, so students who might be missing out or ones who are completely unaware or just don't feel encouraged to really strive for their future. And then students who might have logistical barriers like transportation or scheduling conflicts, because we're pretty busy at Sumner. It's, it can be stressful. But challenges, the main challenges that students like me face in accessing it are just lack of awareness, and then the limited opportunities are very specific to our pathways. Like, a biomed student can't do what a digital media student is doing, so it's very limited in what you can do. So, my recommendations are really just informing every student that real-world learning is like part of their, of most of their like field trips and other like activities. And then like making sure that each of those pathway students get one of these experiences so they at least have some better idea before they graduate. And, you know, I've spent all this money at college and all this time, and, oh no, I don't want this anymore. This degree is useless. So, pretty, pretty nice to have. But, yeah, so, my big thing is just help students learn what every, what all this is and all the benefits it can bring you. Thank you.
I'm gonna have Harmon come up.
Good evening. My name is Yolani Pastan.
My name is Andrew B. S.
We're both the Student Voice Ambassador representatives for J.C. Harmon High School.
Make sure you speak into the mic as close as best you can. Thank you. We wanna hear what you have to say.
Our roles and journey. Our school's college and career coordinator, Lila Stone, knew that we wanted to make a change in our school. She knew that if given the opportunity, we would take full advantage of them. We had the role of communicating with our school, bridging the gap between students and staff.
One of us focuses on students from different grades in our school, asking them how we can get the word out and how they can know about the opportunities they have. The other was in charge of speaking to staff about ways we could get the word out to each grade, talking with them about new and already existing programs. So, types of activities completed and estimated impact. So, our first activity was a survey, asking our students for their opinions on our school's opportunities. Our second activity was a video explaining to students what real-world learning is and what it helps with.
Our third and fourth activity were a bit alike, but different at the same time. Our third activity was talking to eighth grader students about the opportunities they have once they join high school. So, we went to our elementary school, which is Argentine Middle School, and we talked to their whole eighth grade class during, at their school, and talked to them about the opportunities. And our fourth activity was an eighth grade visit day. So, both Argentine and Roseville Middle School came into our high school for a visit and got to see what next year would look like for them and got to know what opportunities we offer for them. Real-world learning at our school, it looks different than most of our schools. We offer KCKCC college classes and tech plus internships. We've both been involved in college classes.
I've taken a few like my sophomore, junior, and senior year. I'm still taking a few. I'm completing my public speaking right now, and I've got done with my comp one and two, French one and two. And I've taken several.
I have also taken all of the in-person college classes at our school. I'm currently taking a few online. Four of our students from J.C. Harmon are graduating with their associates this year. This, this is one of the pictures from last year. He was ranked third place in the, in his class and graduated with his associates. We also have kids in our school that are working with tech programs and are graduating with their certificate this year because they've done it for two years. Some of them are doing welding or some of them started this year and are planning to complete it next year. We also have students that are doing internships, whether they worked with vibrant health for the first part of their semester. And we have some kids that are working within the district too. One of our friends, his name is Vindell Harris, and he's working with our elementary school. So going in an internship, teaching third graders. And these are great opportunities that are helping our students and our school.
Key insights from our experience. So engaging students and defining, engaging students are saying defining RWL and gathering feedback through focus groups has helped tailor opportunities to their interests, making learning more authentic and relevant. How students are currently learning about RWL at our school is through hands-on collaborative projects. It increases motivation engagement. More consistent communication channels and opportunities for private feedback could further string in our voice, student voice and participation. What surprised you about how students engage or don't engage in RWL? So some students are less engaged by traditional lectures, but become highly invested when they see the world where learning impact of their work.
The barriers we face in access. Students are, the students who are benefiting from real-world learning at our schools are students with high GPAs and students are involved in extracurricular activities. Our student ambassadors are consist of students that are involved in 2020 leadership, NHS, student council, Enough is Enough, and many more activities. And we group them all together because they all have one thing in common, which is they're involved and they're always working for, to succeed. The people that are missing out on these opportunities are the people who don't know that we have these opportunities at our school. The people that are not reaching out and asking for help and asking to be able to do something greater. And our students that are not qualifying because of grades or GPA. The challenges that we face in access and real-world learning are limited opportunities or spots with KC KCC and transportation. And we also have kids that have, don't have the opportunity to access them because of language barriers.
So how can your school improve access to RWL? They can improve by having a list and organizer with all the opportunities. What strategies or activities would help more students learn about and engage in RWL? Student-led information sessions, mentorship programs, awareness campaigns, better communication from schools. How can educators and school leaders best, better support students in these experiences? Celebrating the students and encouraging them. What specific actions should your school take to ensure every student earns a market value asset before graduation? They should ask students about their interests and get them involved in their interests.
Now, our next steps as we are graduating, we want to be able to still, next year, be having students keep going and doing real-world learning activities. We're working with our student ambassadors and our students, and our teachers to have a list of opportunities students have, to have a list when they can start doing it. So we have students and we encourage our students in, that are ambassadors, to tell their friends, to tell their peers and younger students about the opportunities they've done and that they have once they reach a certain grade level or a certain GPA. We have made a list and talked to our teachers for upcoming freshmen to have something that they can look forward, to know that they have to have a certain GPA or be inserting things during tassels or stalls once they graduate and they, they're doing something within their community.
Next we have Slago.
Hello, my name is Cardelle Brown. And my partner, Unique Lewis, isn't here, so I'll be the only one presenting today. And we are from FL Slago High School. Our role in our journey, our opportunity at RWL gave us many opportunities to develop and gain many skills such as communications. Thanks to our teacher, Ms. Richardson, we had the opportunity to talk about issues at our school such as littering and tobacco usage at our schools and spread the issue to our communities as well as raising awareness to RWL. We came far since the beginning of the program from having little to no interactions to making a presentation to show our classmates and get to work with teachers and help us continue this path of spreading and raising important issues. Real-world learning at our school. What have you learned about the types of RWL opportunities at your school? We have learned things such as intercepts, jobs, or to gain experience, field trips, different career paths like nursing or business develop, business development, even classes or learning business education. Most things we do, as previously said by our past member, most of the things we do are connected to RWL in some way. Key insights from my experience. How students are currently learning about RWL at our school? There are a few counselors and teachers who reach out to students and give us packets that tells us what RWL is and what exactly they do, which is how I got into the program myself. Barrier to access. Who is currently benefiting the most from RWL? Students or anyone that shows interest and are willing to learn new experiences as well as willing to inform others. That may be NHS, as previously says, as any of the past members, or those who entered programs like Stop Tobacco and such as more. Who might be missing out and challenges students facing access to RWL are not being interested enough to try and be informed. Many school regulations that stop them from going such as transportation, missing days, or may not have enough information to show out. My recommendations for change. How can your school improve access to RWL? Gain more awareness to RWL and given the time to give students the courage to join. What strategies or activities would help more students learn about and engage in RWL? For that, I said activities, surveys, little fun facts, and anything else that may encourage them to join. How can educators and school leaders better support students in these experiences? Practices. Encourage them to try and not to be afraid. Even if they aren't interested, they should be encouraged to go for it because they may turn to love it. Now what? What I can recommend is to get more students to reach out and be willing to try out RWL and see how much they can have fun, learn from them, and hopefully improve next year. Thank you.
In our last presentation, we have Wanda.
All right. Show them Bulldogs.
All right, good evening, board members. Before I begin, obviously, there's no slide up. There were some technical difficulties with mine, so I took down a couple notes and then I'll just go off the top of my head. But with that being said, my name is Muchi Ranyana, but you guys can call me Mucho. I'm representing USD 500 and obviously the best school in the district, Wanda High School. Obviously, obviously. So to begin. So I like to begin with a quote. And this is a quote I got from one of my fellow Bulldogs, which, Marquis Fagan. And he goes as, "The basis of our schools should be real-world learning opportunities, not the other way around." And this quote stuck with me throughout my whole, my whole semester with the Kaufman Foundation. So specifically, what was my role? I was appointed to be the ambassador for Wanda High School with Leonola Alvarez, who's obviously not here. You guys heard, you guys heard earlier, by the great Mary Stewart. She appointed me to represent Wanda High School. And how do I feel like I did that? Well, we focused on integration. Instead of creating a new club that was real-world learning, we integrated Enough's Enough. We integrated youth core. We integrated our fellow sports like soccer and football into these types of situations. Instead of focusing on creating something new that someone has to learn, we just took the kids that are already interested in stuff that requires them to be outside of school like sports and youth core and Enough's Enough and just taught them, hey, can you promote real-world learning? Can you teach your fellow students about real-world learning? And that's what I focused on. Leonola focused more on the academic students and I focused more on the sports students because I played three sports. And what we found was, we don't struggle with real-world learning. We struggle with advocating for it. And I think the reason we struggle with that so bad is students don't know how to lead. And the reason they don't know how to lead is because from elementary school, they're taught that the teachers and admin are on top and they don't have a voice. So we focused on giving them a voice. And I focused, focused hopefully on foreign kids. Obviously, as you heard from my full name, I'm probably not American. I was born in Congo and when I came to America, I didn't speak at all until I knew my ABCs and one, two, threes. So I asked myself, why? Why don't these kids who have amazing cultures from Spanish countries, French countries, African countries, have a voice in our schools? According to the US data, Wanda High School alone is 17.6% foreign-born. So clearly, we have a whole brand of cultures from all over the world who we don't hear from because they're taught when they're in school, they're just supposed to go to ELA and learn. Well, we're trying to change that. Wanda is trying to change that. Enough's Enough became 77% Hispanic. Youth Core became 23% French. Football, the biggest sport at our school, was a majority of Hispanic kids. That's the first time that has happened in seven years for Wanda. So that's what we're asking for this district to push for. We're asking to give kids from different cultures a voice. Don't tell them, hey, you're going to speak when you know our language. No, let's hear their ideas. Let's give them the resources we have to listen to their, to listen to their languages. We have enough resources in our district to listen to kids who throw up their flags instead of making them throw up the American flag and then they can speak. That's what we believe. That's what we believe real-world learning is. Because students need to take charge. For a kid to actually love learning, they need to feel like they have some kind of control. So the barriers of transportation, though they're real, it's more of kids are not going to ask their parents to take them to this event, are not going to ask them to drive them to Kaufman if they don't feel like they have a voice. If you're taught to go and sit down for eight hours and just listen to someone speak, you're never going to learn. I experienced that. I was lucky enough to have things like PBS Kids to teach me, but kids in our generation don't, unfortunately. But we can change that. Our number in foreign-born students is only growing. Luckily enough, we have you guys listening for the first time in what I feel like is the first time at least. So let's push for real-world learning to not just be about kids who speak the language, who understand what is going on. Like my fellow peer said, kids have all kinds of barriers. We can change that by simply telling them, hey, we don't know your situations, but we don't mind them. You can join us. It's not about you understand. It's not about your grades. It's not about your transportation. We can provide that. It's not about your history. If we're going based on history of students, if we're judging kids by their history, I wouldn't be standing in front of you guys. I attended the great Argentine Middle School. Trust me, I was a horrible kid. I was a horrible kid until sophomore year. And then I figured out that I had a voice. And then I joined the Kaufman Foundation for multiple programs, including this one. And that's what we've been pushing for in Wanda. Pushing for kids who look like us, who speak like us with an accent, to have a voice, to not change their accent, to not change their lingo, to wear durags in front of adults. So let's push for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's just a little of what we do in the Diploma Plus. We really try to make sure that our students have some really authentic experiences so their voices can be heard. So support student voices in our schools and know that everything that we do is aligned with our KISAS goals. And now I know Dr. Fernandez Flores and Dr. Conrad will come up and share with you third quarter updates. But I just want you to see the alignment, that it aligns with our post-secondary and that I'm proud of our students because their voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. And thank you to all of our student presenters who are here. We are always welcome here to, to our board meetings. Thank you for sharing your, your stories and your presentations with the board and with the district tonight. We appreciate you.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
We're seeing student voices. What happens? They gave us all this information. They gave their opinions. Who's going to, I'm sorry, who's going to pick that up? Because it seems like transportation is the problem. And, and to get them where they need to go so they can have these experiences. So will we follow up? They gave a great presentation.
So I asked Dr. Wright to bring them here because that was a part of what students did with Kaufman. So you all can hear, but that's a part of what the Diploma Plus team and the building principals are doing. They're hearing their perspective and as some of them shared, several of their ideas have been implemented. And then their problem solving around those things that there may be some barriers. Like each one of them identified barriers and what to do with those barriers. So they're working with the staff in their home schools to implement those things. That was a part of their responsibility. And they all, at the top, they were compensated for their time. So the next group, if these, this group is not a part of that, it'll continue and they connect with other classes, clubs, and those kinds of things to implement those things that they are advocating for.
And is it possible to include Fairfax? Because we did the high schools and they have high school students.
Fairfax, there are, every school is included. They all couldn't be here tonight. Like all of our schools are included and is, and is a part of those components. Yeah.
Okay, now when you say, oh, just for clarity, I want to make.
The high schools.
Okay.
For this component, but we do.
They were asked. They just didn't. We didn't have a tape or something from Fairfax? Because I saw the high schools and then Fairfax does have high school students.
Yes, Fairfax is included. They are included.
We did. We included all of the students. We talked to the principal at Fairfax. She had two students, but they were unable to be here.
Here tonight, yeah.
But they, yes, we, we always include all of our schools. We include Fairfax every single time.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
I appreciate your question, Ms. Page. I think I need some more clarity. So this was an opportunity provided by Kaufman. This is an opportunity that's presented again to students and they're handpicked from their buildings again. Because I also will notate one thing that I heard that stood out to me that came up in every group that presented tonight was the barriers. If you didn't have a high GPA or you were discouraged in school. And so that percentage of our graduates that are not graduating with real-world learning or the market asset value, those are those students that those students we just heard were talking about. Not the kids doing honors, not the ones playing sports. So like, I guess for me, I need a little bit more of like, what is it that we as a board can do to make sure that all of our students are having these opportunities? Because to me, that is the biggest barrier. The student who's part of all of those clubs participating, they're going to have opportunities and they're going to be shining stars. But how do we change the trajectory or like, what are the tangible things that we are doing as a district? And so I guess, all of this to say, like, I'd like for us to have more concrete conversation about what that looks like. We can't have a North Star and be leaving kids out. Like that doesn't work in any circle, so.
Right. We are not, definitely not trying to leave kids out.
And I don't think, and I don't disagree with you. I don't think it's trying. I think we're unintentionally somehow or, and I hate to say that we're intentionally doing it, but somehow, because everyone up there had that on their list.
Can I just interrupt? So we have, we recognize that and we have heard from kids over the years. So one of the things that we did this year, so every freshman at Harmon and Slago, their curriculum includes it. So we're building those opportunities into the actual curriculum. So if you show up, you go to school, you do these projects, you will get those experiences. That takes time. And if you follow the trajectory of the number of students who are actually graduating with a Diploma Plus, the percentages are increasing because of the things that the Diploma Plus team and the curriculum team are doing to build those authentic experiences within the curriculum. Now what that looks like, so, and we constantly do the feedback loop from the students to say, hey, we implemented this, we did this, who did we miss? And so then we hear back from them, we go and tweak it. But we are being intentional about making sure that it's just a part of the core curriculum. And that takes time, money and resources to sustain it. But that's part of what that team and the teachers are doing. Because we know everybody's not in sports. Everybody's not going to have a high GPA. But we want them to be involved and have a high GPA. But we also want to meet them where they are so that they have those experiences. So those are the things that we've implemented this year and we'll take the feedback. So those are the things that we've implemented this year and we'll take the feedback from what the students said, makes the adjustments that we can within the constraints that we have.
So I guess one thing that stood out is like, there's still a core piece that like, they're not connecting. So you have to show up in order to have access, is what I just heard you say. But for a district that has a high level of chronic absenteeism, especially at the high school, like, how did they not show up and still access? Because when we talk about doing things untraditionally, we've talked about this for a while, like, we don't live in agriculture society. Like, how do those kids access that without having to show up and do the work? We, and I know you're familiar with Youth Build, like, there is opportunities that we can give kids hands-on skill without them just reading paper all day long. And so I think that's where I'd like for us to like, get to, is a vision of, you don't, like, yes, math, reading, social studies, science are important, but that's not fitting the needs of all of our students. And so how do we creatively, innovatively come up with a solution? Because that is the percentage that we're never going to get to our North Star. But I will get off this, this mic for now. But I think this is a conversation as we talk about the portrait of a graduate, as we talk about all of these things. There are graduates that are going to come to us and have done all the things, but there are folks who are going to need a different solution, so.
Right, Ms. Russell, and we are addressing that. Like Dr. Stubblefield said, when we were at the summit, we were able to take their information and problem solve. And I took that information back with my team because the team was there. And we are already planning, how can we address some of the barriers that they mentioned? But also, how can we address some of those students who are not participating? How can we get them more involved? I know through Client Connect projects, through entrepreneurship experience, all of those things that we're doing in our department, we're trying to make sure that all students have access and that we've been equitable to everyone and that we are really preparing them for the future.
Okay, thank you. And I will say, I know you don't need no more money because you got one of the biggest budgets out there, but we got to figure it out.
But I do need more money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next we will hear our KISA report and update. Dr. Fernandez Flores and-
Dr. Lucero.
Dr. Lucero coming to the podium. Good evening and welcome.
And I will just say, we connected these two together so that as they're talking about the things that we are monitoring and measuring throughout our KISA outcomes, the, what you heard from the students are the outcomes. So we just wanted to put faces with the things that we're doing. So I'll turn it over to them.
All right. Good evening. Buenos noches, Board President Lopez and President Ms. Russell, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, and esteemed board members, dedicated staff and valued community members. I'm Dr. Sarah Lucero, Executive Director of Student Services. Joining me tonight for the third-quarter report is my team member from Diploma Plus in collaboration with the Leadership and Learning Team as we share the outcome data related to Kansas Education System Accreditation. Dr. Conrad was not able to join us tonight. Our district's strategic plan priorities offer clear direction for all departments as they work in alignment with the board's goals and meet expectations for accreditation through KISA 2.0. Today's presentation provides an overview of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools' key performance indicators and Quarter III Benchmark Assessment results. These metrics align to our strategic priorities. These are priorities because they assist school buildings in determining whether they are on track for overall outcome. The overall outcome being increasing graduation rates that meet or exceed the state average and the reduction of students scoring at Level 1 in the Kansas Assessment Program. For our quarter-average daily attendance, our current attendance stands at 90.6. This is just 0.3% below our annual goal of 90.9%. While we're not right at the target yet, there still represents an improvement over last year. Continued focus at the building level will be essential to close this gap. Our Quarter III data shows chronic absenteeism rate of 33.2%, which exceeds our targeted reduction for the 24-25 school year by 3.4%. This places ahead of a pace toward our long-term goal. Continued attention to attendance plans, proactive family engagement, student support will be key to sustaining this trajectory. Our projected behavior incident data for the year indicates we are on track to surpass our goal by 63 fewer incidents. This is a strong indicator that efforts around social-emotional supports, restorative practices, and consistent implementation of the student code of conduct are beginning to yield results. Maintaining this progress will require continuing, continued coaching, data review, and alignment across schools. We are projected to reduce suspensions by 542 beyond our target for the year. This is a substantial improvement. This progress reflects the impact of sustained training and programs. Our post-secondary readiness program is monitored through Diploma Plus endorsement framework, which identifies key assets students should attain prior to graduation. We are currently on track to meet our goal of 1,026 graduates earning a Diploma Plus endorsement by the end of the school year. This evening, you also heard about some students who earned their associate's degree. We're excited to say that notably, we now have 12 students earning an associate degree through our partnership with Kansas City, Kansas Community College. On our projected graduation rate for the 24-25 school year exceeds our target by 2.2%, signaling continued growth in the student completion. This project progress reflects the collective work across schools to monitor student progress, provided timely interventions, and align graduation requirements with post-secondary planning. Our schools have remained focused on ensuring every eligible student across the finish line are prepared for post-secondary success. Let's take a closer look at the programs that we are implementing. Our academic and social-emotional and attendance initiatives are initially structured through the MTSS framework, with all focusing on strengthening our Tier 1 instruction and supports for students. Each of these programs, ranging from high-quality instruction material and Avid to PSYOP, reflect our commitment to delivering consistent, effective core instruction and learning environments. At the same time, we continue to build out Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions in response to individual needs, utilizing our Panorama Student Success Platform to monitor effectiveness and support through data-informed decision-making. This comprehensive approach enables us to both address academic and non-academic barriers to our students' success. As we prepared for the 24-25 school year, the Leadership and Learning Team identified the following implementation stages across schools to guide targeted supports and system-wide alignment. Those designations helped us support, or help us target supports where it was needed. For the upcoming school year, our teams will reevaluate the implementation stages to inform differentiated sports, supports, and ensure continued improvement from the district level all the way down to the classroom. Dr. Fernandez Flores will present the Benchmark Data 3 for this quarter.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, the Executive Director of Diploma Plus. The following slides present English Language Arts and Mathematics Benchmark Mastery Data. We will review the data by implementation stage and student academic performance in the mastery category. The district benchmark assessments are assessments that are given four times a year at the end of the quarter and assess grade-level standards. This slideshow shows that the third-quarter English Language Arts Benchmark Data is segregated by stage of implementation. Schools in the installation stage demonstrated that 22.3% of students achieved mastery level within those, and in initial implementation achieved 27.5% of students achieved mastery. These results suggest a positive correlation between the implementation progress and student outcomes, underscoring the importance of advancing implementation fidelity across all sites. In this slide, the ELA mastery is described by building level and implementation stage. High schools saw the greatest difference from 30.1% in installation schools to 44.3% in initial implementation schools. Elementary schools had a slight increase, while middle-school rates remained flat. These results highlight the impact of implementation progress at the high school levels and the need for targeted support in middle schools. Here, we view ELA mastery by English learner status and implementation stage. Former ELLs had the highest mastery in both stages, with a notable difference between 47.6% to 53.9%. Never ELLs mastery difference by implementation is notable, from 31.5% to 37.9% achieving mastery. However, current ELLs have not yet gained access to mastery based on implementation Students without disabilities in initial implementation schools outperformed those in installation schools by 6.3 percentage points. For students with disabilities, the difference was 8.3 points, showing stronger mastery rates in schools with more advanced implementation. This slide compares ELA mastery by race between installation and initial implementation schools. Most students groups perform better in initial implementation schools. However, three groups, American Indian or Alaskan Native, multiracial, and Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, had higher mastery rates in installation schools. We will review the mastery data in mathematics. This slide reflects third-quarter math benchmark data by stage of implementation. Schools in installation stage show 21.4% students at mastery, while initial implementation schools are slightly higher at 21.7%. This minimal difference suggests that unlike English Language Arts, the stage of implementation has not yet led to substantial gain in math outcomes. Continued focus on implementation fidelity along with targeted instructional supports will be critical in improving math performance across all schools. When reviewing by level, math benchmark mastery in installation and initial implementation school is presented here for mathematics. Elementary schools in initial implementation schools outperformed those in installation by 5.1 percentage points. However, middle-school and high-school students showed slightly higher mastery in installation schools. It's important to note that in the 24-25 school year, we have the initial implementation for K5 mathematics with our adopted resource iReady. Never ELL students had 1.3 points higher in the rate of mastery in initial implementation schools. Former ELL and current ELL students performed better in installation schools by 4.9% and .9 points respectively. Students without disabilities had equal mastery rates in both school types at 22.5%. Students with disabilities performed 2.9 points higher in initial implementation school buildings. When dis segregated by race, we noticed five had higher math mastery rates in initial, in initial implementation schools. Two groups, American Indian or Alaskan Native and Hispanic students, had higher mastery in installation schools, with American Indian or Alaskan Native with significant differences. In Quarter 4, our work remained anchored in the key strategies outlined in this presentation, with a continued emphasis on strengthening Tier 1 instruction within our multi-tiered system of support framework. High-quality instructional materials continue to serve as the foundation for academic improvement. Our Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs teams have developed and are actively refining implementation plans, particularly for iReady in mathematics and ongoing implementation of CKLA in my perspectives, the English Language Arts curriculum in our district. For, and in addition, we're monitoring Tier 2 implementation efforts that support targeted interventions. Tier 2 and Tier 3 curricula currently in use include Lexia at the middle schools, as well as 95% group and Really Great Reading in K through 5. Professional learning communities continue to be a key structure for instructional planning and collaboration. For the past three years, principals have led these efforts with coaching support from Solution Tree, helping teacher teams maximize planning time and strengthening instructional alignment. Benchmark data is reviewed during professional learning community meetings to inform instructional adjustments and address individual student needs. The Department of Research and Evaluation distributes benchmark results directly to school leaders to support data-informed decision-making. Foundational PSYOP training has also been completed district-wide. This initiative establishes a shared foundation for recognizing and implementing instructional strategies that support multilingual learners. As part of our ongoing commitment, the PSYOP leadership team focused during Quarter 4 on planning how-to onboard new staff into the framework. When selecting high-quality instructional materials, the Diploma Plus team prioritizes resources that include embedded support for English learners. In support of structured literacy, the district is expanding access to letters training. The Diploma Plus professional learning team is coordinating efforts to ensure all relevant staff are equipped to implement evidence-based literacy practices with consistency. This training is aligned to the instructional routines already embedded in the high-quality instructional materials for English Language Arts classrooms. All put together, these strategies reflect our sustained commitment to high-quality, inclusive instruction designed to meet the needs of every learner and prepare all students for post-secondary success. What questions might you have?
Thank you both for the information. Board, we'll open the floor for questions on this report.
I'll start.
Dr. Wen.
Thank you. And it's, it's important. I know it's the important work that you're doing, so I want to acknowledge that. I need further clarification as to, and we, your slide on page 11 talks about installation, initial implementation, and full implementation. Help me remember how long this process, this process is, from installation to all schools' fully implementation.
I would say that each of those would depend on where the schools are currently at in the learning of the programming that we are focusing on. So for instance, high schools have been incorporating Avid for three, is it three years now? Three years now. So we, those teams would be approaching in implementation. And by the time we consider a school in full implementation, we are noticing with over 50% fidelity of the implementation of the program. In relation to Avid specifically, though, that programming does bring with it rubrics that clearly outline the stages in which they are.
Okay. So then help me understand a couple of these slides. You had greater success with the, in the installation phase than the initial implementation phase. One would think that that would not be the case. So what's going on there? Do you know what's going on there?
I would look at the specific group that we are talking about. So for instance, if we might be looking at the English language learners, we would have to disaggregate that data to help us understand at what stage in the language development groups of students might be and compare it to the resources we're providing and the instruction that those students are surrounded with to pinpoint clearly what might the discrepancy be.
Okay, so, I mean, whatever slide that was, I, I didn't, I, I can go back and, and you know these forward and backward, but, and this is the fourth term, right?
Third.
Third, okay. So based on what you just said, did you, from the second now to the third, did you do that?
Many of this analysis also occurs at the classroom level for our- Many of this analysis also occurs at the classroom level for our teachers to understand what changes need to occur for the students to learn the standard that they've been teaching at the classroom level.
So what's the answer?
So systemically, I will say, when we are looking at all of this, we started this last year. So when we look at the data this year and those things that we roll out as a district, we've started to have conversations, we'll look at it and we'll make the adjustments to the system for next year. And there are some schools, when you look at the data, that are now at over fifty percent. And so we will update them start, at the start of the next school year, once we have all of the data. Because part of the, some of the data points, like CAP and those sorts of things, we don't get that until the fall. So we, at the district level, have to make those adjustments. But when the staff and the buildings are looking at their fast bridge and their benchmark assessments and that other formative data, they're making real-time adjustments. When we do walkthroughs, we collect all that information and then we have, we will unpack it and have more specific answers and those kind of things once we go through the entire school year. But we're collecting all of the data currently. So it is an annual cycle for us to see some of the things or to answer more specifically those questions about systemically, what's systemic or what's unique to a particular school.
So you do not make adjustments during the year?
The teachers are making adjustments. We're not, and we make adjustments based off of like the instructional coaches supporting them and when we do the professional development around the instructional materials, those kind of adjustments are made. But if you're saying when we look at it to say if a school is in installation or initial, we just did this for the first year, so we'll know a better cadence when we go into next year.
So how do you measure, when you said those, the results were different if it was implemented with fidelity? How do you measure that?
We have walkthrough tools, rubrics that outline what we are looking for, especially at the defining stage that we might be in. So for instance, as we implemented I Ready this school year, I Ready, the curriculum includes three routines that a teacher would execute on. And so for this first year, we are looking to see the degree, the number of times we are able to observe one specific routine as we're growing into our understanding. So we have a tool, our staff goes in, we observe what's happening, and then we report on what percentage of time we're able to watch that routine. And we're monitoring, we have a scale of what we would like to see and we monitor where we are in the observing of that skill. Then our teams will retool their professional learning for the professional learning that occurs on Wednesday to zero in on an area that may have been noticed as perhaps not growing as fast as we would like with relation to the delivery of instruction using the curricular material.
And thank you, and for the, just bear with me here. Help me understand, what is mastery?
We will defer that question to Dr. Conrad as I believe that's a mathematical equation he uses.
All right. Well, thank you. You've done well. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Russell and then Ms. Brownlee Page.
Okay. So I just want to clarify because I thought CSI and some, and the other acronym buildings, they started this process almost two and a half years ago with Solution Tree. And I thought that's how we adopted this for the entire system. And so I guess I'm, I'm still struggling to understand the process in which, how you get to fidelity, because you're not going to every single classroom at a building. And so how, so between Digi Coaching, between the building principal check-ins, I guess I'm confused how buildings can go almost two and a half years and not have significant progress. We're talking about fifty percent. We're not talking about a hundred or seventy-five or eighty. So like, what are the barriers with our investments in professional development? Like, there are a lot of things we're doing. Why, what is the barrier that's not allowing folks to get to fifty percent?
So just to clarify a couple of things, our ISI and CSI schools, what they were doing with KLN and TAZN was implementing professional learning communities. That's not this, these stages.
But we have been doing this longer than a year because we brought on.
Can you clarify what you're referring to?
I'm talking to the implementation, the installation, the implementation and the final stage. We've been doing that longer than a year.
We just introduced that this year. These are terms that as we worked with the state in our key, the first time we reported this was in the fall. We didn't, if you go back and look at our reports last year, we did not have these stages rolled out as far as those sorts of things. Our, and part of that was feedback that we've gotten from our partners who we work with to systematize and make sure that we are within all of our buildings doing stuff consistently. We introduced this in the fall and that's why we are saying we need a full-year cycle to share information. Now.
That would be hard. I hear you, but that's hard for me to understand because in the last meeting, we just had a conversation about this. And I asked a question and it's interesting to me that you pulled out Pacific Islanders and that's what I mentioned to Ms. Clark. But then when I asked the question about them being high in chronic absenteeism and it was told to me that's ten students, but now today, they're the mastery group. Well, of course, if you do the math, they're going to have a high level of mastery if we're talking about ten people. And so I guess I'm just.
We have students enrolled through, like, the end in second quarter can be too low and then we have students enroll and do, and the end can change. So I think there are, and I understand, and I'm not, I understand like you grappling with that, but who's in our classrooms and how they show up, that changes day to day if you think about like how our students come up. So we can, the end, the last time could have been ten and it might be more than, I don't know off the top of my head, but it may be larger than ten at this time. So it would show up differently because of the way the data of who's in the classroom. So I, I hear you, but I think some of the things are being, like, there are initiatives within the like AVID or PLCs or those sort of things that different schools implemented at different times. So there are some schools who've been doing things for three years and some schools, this is their first year just because of how it was rolled out. So there are some spaces where you're like, yep, they've been doing that for a while. When will they be at full implementation? And those are the things that as we're looking at it, we will be able to, when we come back next year, like first, at the end of first quarter, you will see some schools in some areas, I mean, some schools at full implementation.
Ms. Brownlee Page.
I just have a comment on the overview of the report. And I don't know who wrote this. I don't know if a group wrote it or Conrad wrote it. But when it says, "It is important to note that many of the measures that go into building risk levels, student risk levels, and student outcomes are beyond the control of the district." That's scary. And then when I saw today Lindbergh come in and they've worked hard to get their attendance up, then we have five schools that we said won the challenge award. It's going to take a challenge on all of us, you guys, the teachers, everybody. We know we have problems, but that doesn't stop us from doing all that we can to give these kids everything that they need to be successful. If Ferguson and St. Louis can turn it around, I'm quite sure we have the capable people to do it too. But when I read that, that just didn't sit well. And any parent, it wouldn't sit well. This is beyond our control. Then why are we here? We're paying too much money out to people who are experts. And we got to make this work. We got to figure it out. Now, if they can do it, I know we can do it. And if we have five schools who are trying and working hard, it doesn't mean the others aren't. I'm just saying from that statement alone, it just doesn't sit well. We can do better than that. Say, well, we don't have any control over that. Well, we better get some control over that and figure it out. And as long as we're showing people, hey, we're doing all that we can. We're trying to make this work. We got to keep coming here every day trying to make it work. Yes, they have problems, but we got to figure out how we can help work out those problems. That little statement there just doesn't, that scares me. So again, I don't know who wrote it. If this is Mr. Conrad alone and he's giving the overview or what? But we need to come together on it. I want to see the same passion I saw in him in another situation, which I won't go into detail. But if you can give that group that kind of feeling that they can and they will, our kids deserve that. And if they can do it in Ferguson and they're doing it in other places, we can do it also.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Additional comments or questions on the report?
I guess I have a comment. I guess I would like to see like in writing what buildings are where, what percentage you guys have them at. Because I, I think what my bigger concern is, is that I'm not seeing the growth, us saying that for two quarters, everyone's in the same spot and yet we've invested a lot in the last two, three years. How do, how are we tracking the percentage of growth and like how, give us tangible something that we can see that says this is how we're moving the needle. If this is what we're saying we're committed to, then let's, then please show us so that we feel more informed because nothing is more frustrating than feeling like I'm being the biggest cheerleader, but then I'm also still frustrated as well because I don't, I'm not understanding the clear process. And I'm not saying that anyone did anything wrong. I just think you really have to track it with data and be able to say over time, this is how it's getting better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Right? A lot of information as you digest and dive into it a bit more. If there are additional comments or questions, please send those to Dr. Doublefield and we'll make sure to get responses to the full board. Thank you both for your presentation tonight. We are going to take a quick 10-minute recess before we return to item six on the agenda. We'll take a quick 10-minute recess and return at 7:33. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Smith, when you're ready. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene. We've still got lots on our agenda to get through. All right, Board, next on our agenda is item number six. We will hear our, we have our Turner Library Quarterly Report. So is there a motion to accept the Turner Library Quarterly Report?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on the quarterly report? Not Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next, item 6B. This is back in front of us, Board. As you recall, we tabled this, this item around the public library holidays and scheduled closing for the '25-'26 year. There was some information shared in the end of the week. If you had a chance to hopefully review that with some additional insight and information. It is up for approval if it's the will of the Board. Any additional context to share, Dr. Stubblefield?
No. Some of the specific data that was requested was included in the end of the week, last week.
And it is back in front of us for potential approval. It is recommended for approval tonight.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the proposed holiday and scheduled closings for the Kansas City-Kansas Public Library. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next, Board, item number seven. These are up for potential action if it is the will of the Board. These have come before us at least once and are requesting action. The first 7A, it's recommended the Kansas City-Kansas Board of Education approve the low bid from Edward Don and the amount of $51,520.27 for a new dishwashing machine for Wyandotte High School in accordance with requirements of Board policy DJED as submitted by Mr. Carell. Mr. Steve Lilly and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions? Hearing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next item, it is recommended the Kansas City-Kansas Board of Education approve the recommendation of the RFP Evaluation Committee that SAP Design Studio be approved to conduct a facility assessment and feasibility study of the main library building as submitted by Mr. Carell and is recommended by Mr. Steve Lilly and Dr. Anna Stubblefield. And just some context, again, Board, this was the facility, there was a committee put together to review RFPs in order to do an assessment of our current downtown library and feasibility study. This group would then be leading that study moving forward, and there's a timeline of when that will happen. Mr. Carell, thank you for hurting all of us again who were a part of that committee. Thank you for everybody that was a part of that committee to work through that. I know that was a ton of work and a ton of extra time that we asked of our Board members and staff who participated in that. So thank you all for your help in that. So is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Some move.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
How long will it take them? Because we did it in, what, 2016 or was it 2018?
Yes, I believe the timeframe is 90 days. Correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, I think, give or take. So we've anticipated 90 days from when they start.
Right, and that's correct. 90 days is what was specified in the solicitation. Got Brad McKenzie here from SAP Design.
Yes, and so to, for context, and that's, thank you for that question, Ms.
Right. So he thinks 90 days is feasible.
Yeah, and I would just share, I think that committee did talk about the previous assessment that was done. You're absolutely right, there was a couple of assess, or an assessment done, though there was a follow-up. And I think this is going to give us a better idea with today's information. Additionally, there was a component that wasn't included necessarily in the previous assessment around potential tax credits that could help with financial costs of the project moving forward. So that is an additional component that was being intentionally looked at for this project that wasn't, that wasn't fully discussed maybe in the previous assessment. So that's part of that.
And with this one, are they looking at what it would cost to build a new one? What it would cost to adjust and make adjustments on the existing building considering what they already have in their bank? And then what about this other? We're getting this, but the committee that was supposed to be looking at things, are they still looking at things? And when do we get an update from them? And how does that coincide with what he's doing?
Yeah, so I can maybe chime in, and if anybody else has additional information on that latter part of your question, then I'll let Brad talk about the potential, what is going to come out of the assessment in terms of what it costs for new and that type of thing. So the committee, that library committee that had been meeting, they're, they're, basically, my understanding is on hold right now until the Board and this assessment is done so that they have a better understanding of true costs that we're looking at. Their intention, my understanding, is to still move forward with potential fundraising, if that's what you're asking about, to help support the project. I think they were just in kind of a wait mode until the Board figured out which direction we were going, specifically with whether it's a new build or remodel or renovation, whatever that is, whatever the Board decides. So they're kind of going to wait and hold until we figure out how we want to move forward, but they're still committed to help support the project.
Okay, I hear what you said, but I'm a little confused. Because I thought they were going to try to, I was waiting for them to come up with monies that they had raised, things they were going to do. And then to hear you say, they're waiting on us. I was waiting on them. I was wondering why it was taking so long.
And I can maybe provide a little bit of clarity. And so probably four months ago, when we last got an update from them, we talked about how a lot of the potential philanthropic folks that they were reaching out to support this, that, or to support a downtown library, that they would like to have more of a concrete idea of location and design and the different elements. And so we, as a Board, talked about the different options, and that's kind of how we got to this place with this assessment. And so I will let Wayne talk about, Wayne and Mr. McKenzie talk about the different things that they will bring back to us as a Board to make a decision. I think it, because we are reducing the meals on the library, it will be in the best interest of us to make a decision. If the, if that smaller committee is able to raise the dollars, then we can attribute that into the final payment for how we pay for it. But I think the sole decision of what we decide to do moving forward is going to be with this Board. And then if there is a gift made to the district from that committee, we have also already given them permission to do that as well. Does that make sense, clarify?
Well, I mean, that's, it does. But, you know, I left thinking one thing, and then it becomes something else. So it just gets a little goofy, and then we don't all have the same information. So thank you for sharing that today. It does make a difference.
And we are happy to share the final, I think we can share the final notebook that we reviewed. I think we didn't share the information with the full Board during the process because we didn't know who was going to get selected. But now that they've been selected, we can share all of the work that SAP has provided, both in the interview process, but any clarifying documents. So everyone has a good understanding of what, what they're tasked with doing starting tomorrow, so.
And if you want to go ahead and share your response to Ms. Page, Brownlee Page's first question around, what will be the end product? What will you come back with recommendations on, what will you share with the Board?
All right, yeah, my name's Brad McKenzie. I'm a partner with SAP Design Architects. Thank you for having me here. So what we have been tasked with is to look at the current facility. And as has been mentioned, some of the new things that have come up is potential for historic tax credits. And so what our evaluation is going to be, it's going to build on what has already been done. And then we are going to assess the building to determine, is it, how we can renovate the building and take advantage of the tax credits? Can we do in addition to the building? What the costs for those options are? How tax credits might offset those costs? And then also the option, as you had asked, what if we build a library in a different location and what the potential cost would be for that? Then we're going to take all those different options and the budgets for those, and we'll do kind of a cost-benefit analysis to help determine, you know, what makes the most sense. Obviously, the library is here to serve the community, and part of this process is also going to be doing some community assessments to help determine, you know, what are the needs that maybe are not being met right now and how we can better meet the needs that we already are meeting. So those, those things will be combined to kind of help determine, you know, this is probably the ideal step forward and what it'll cost.
I got a question.
Can I just clarify one thing real quick?
Yes.
While you mentioned you're giving cost estimates, I, we did in this RFP not include specific design in this development.
Correct.
And so they are, based on what the previous document said and what they hear from both us and the community and the stakeholders, now they're going to give us the best ideal, but I don't want us to get, yes, there will be a cost provided to us, but I don't want us to get too caught up on the cost because in the next process, when we put it out for design and build, the cost may change even from the time that we make a decision just due to nature of the world right now, but just also construction in general. And so I just want to make sure that, you said there will be cost analysis in it, but those are not the concrete final costs.
I would, I would suggest the term budget would be a better term than a cost estimate, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Marlin and then Ms. Brownlee Page.
I just want clarity. So at the end of 90 days, you or the team or the group is going to bring back what is feasible, what is doable, what is affordable in a realistic way for us?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll provide a presentation that'll be in digital form as well as a little booklet. Yeah.
Ms. Brownlee Page.
And then how are you going to assess the community?
So we, we do that a couple of ways. One is we work with whoever your selection committee is. It may be the same people. And we identify what we call key stakeholders in the community, and those will be members of the community, people who own businesses in the community, people who may not use the library but are in the community. And we'll work with that group to determine what are the needs. And then, once we kind of get an outline of some of the things from those stakeholders, then we can have community forums where we invite the public in general to come to a meeting. And we say, all right, here's some of the things that have been identified. How do you guys feel about these things? What are, what are these things are important to you? And then we get community input that way.
Another question.
And I would just add, if the Board, if any Board members have, have thoughts about who they should be contacting, who some of those stakeholders are, please share those with Dr. Stubblefield, because I think that'll be important. We talked about selection committee, but to identify, but we just, we want to make sure that we get a broad range of folks to give some input. So if you have some thoughts, please share those. Mr. Marlin.
Thank you for, thank you for being here. My Part B question, you gave us a lot of information on what you, what you plan to do, your intentions. So is 90 days enough time to do all that you, what needs to be done?
That, that's a great question. And that's one of the things that we talked about at the interview. The challenge of the 90 days is going to be getting all of the people together that need to discuss it. So identifying these key stakeholders, getting meetings scheduled with the stakeholders and make sure that their calendars are available, that's, that's going to be the trick. I think we can work together and make it happen, though.
Three months go by fast.
They, they do.
What we, what you intend to do and to bring back, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is quick, but we've done these for schools and for libraries many, many times. So we have, we have a group of people that are ready to do the assessments, and we can get the initial assessments done pretty quick. It's going to be that community engagement and that programming discussion that's going to take the most time. Like I said, if we can get the meetings scheduled. And that's one of the things I've been talking to Wayne, is when can we have our kickoff meeting? So that's going to be our first thing, is have the meeting with the team and start setting some milestone dates and try to get those people's calendars booked so that we can get the right people at the meetings.
That's encouraging. So you've done this before?
We have done it many times before, yes. And one of the, one of the things that Ms. Russell was talking about is we provided a couple of examples, one on a giant scale and one on a, on a much smaller scale of reports that we have done. I don't know if that's what you were going to share, but we offered some examples of what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
My question is more, more, I guess, to the, to the Board. We have gone round and round with this for several years. And so are we able to just make sure this continues to show up on our agenda so that we don't lose sight of it? I hear the 90 days, like, we're already needing to plan for when they will come back and give that report. And then are we setting the next milestone so we, so it just, we know and it stays in front of us? I believe we owe this community a decision. And we owed it to them several years ago. And so I really believe that it is time to give them something, and the committee that continues to work on this. That would be my ask, that we figure out how to keep this on our agenda until we make it to the finish line.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. I think that's a great point. And there are some key milestones that SAP will work on that will come back before the Board, whether it's reports that are shared with the full Board or updates that are brought to the Board. And then once the, the reports are completed, they will be at a Board meeting to share their recommendations and run through all the different scenarios. So there are some key milestones built in to the 90 days. So there are some key milestones built in to the 90 days and out after that. But then, to your point, what happens after that, I think is a good reminder for us.
Okay.
And we need to make sure we include everybody, not just the people who own businesses. Everybody, anybody who's paying taxes here, they should have a voice. That's where the money has to come from. And we gotta make sure we include everybody.
Absolutely. Yep.
Ms. Page, and I don't know what your setup looks like for the community voice, but would it... I don't know the possibilities. Would it make sense to even hold something there at that library? When you talk... Or is that in your plans to have something actually in that library?
Yeah. What we typically do is we have the initial meeting with people that are invited. And then we have a community meeting that would be either at the library or another location that you can have a lot of people at. But generally, it's at the library. And your library has enough meeting space to do that.
I highly recommend, based on like what we've heard and to Ms. Page's point, that we have something there for sure. How you crowd control, I have no idea.
Well, and one of the things we've done in the past, too, is we can offer incentives for people to be there. Because sometimes, if you just open it up to the public, you don't get everybody there that would be good to have there. Like we've done pizza parties before. There's different things. But getting enough people there to get input is definitely important. And it's very critical.
I know there's also several community events that will be taking place when I think about like June. So I don't... You have done this several times. But just thinking about like, what does that look like? Because our community does show up to events. And so I don't know about vendor tables or what that does for you.
Yeah. Piggybacking, we did one in Lewisburg where they had a Halloween activity on the square where they were giving away candy. And we had a table there where we were handing out candy, showing information. So love to get involved in those types of activities as well. Yeah.
I don't see Crystal, but the Back to School Fair Foundation event is probably the best place to meet people at. But I also, Dr. Stubblefield, I was wondering if we maybe put a Google form or something out for folks who want to be interested so that you can share it with folks and then we have their contact information. I don't remember how big committee or the group gets for the engagement piece. I looked at a lot of things. But just to make sure that voices do get the updates, for those who want to be involved, that we make sure that they have that information. So just thinking about that.
I mean, we can communicate to families, but I think we would need to partner with the library because they do touch people that we don't, that may not necessarily have students here. So I'll get with Laura and we'll put out stuff. Because most people don't come to our site, honestly, for the public library information. So we'll make sure that we work with Ms. Hunt because that's a broader audience that may or may not have students in our schools.
And there is a lot of neighborhood groups that you might want to contact that are really political and they're out there and they're doing things. We need to tap into them because it affects them.
Thank you. Mr. Mylan.
I'm in line with Ms... Not to keep pushing it, what Ms. Clerk stated, by all means necessary, to keep it before the people in a consistent way so they can be informed and know what's going on, where we are, how we are doing it, what's sufficient, in all means necessary, you know? And I don't mean negative way, but positive way, legalistic way. Encouraging, like you said, candy, whatever it takes.
And we're happy to come to as many board meetings to give updates as we need to as well to keep you guys informed. I think right now, we had planned, we had planned two board meetings to come to. But if we need to come to a couple more to make sure you guys are informed, we're happy to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or thoughts? Okay. There was a motion and a second on the floor. Thank you. If no other questions, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. And again, thank you, Mr. Correll. Thank you, Brad. A special shout out to Mr. Correll for leading that committee. All right. Next board. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. Item C. It is recommended that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the updates for the 2025-2026 district calendar as submitted by Dr. Judith Campbell and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. If there's anything you want to add? I know there was information about what was changed in board docs for you all to review. But anything to add, Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell?
No. Well, I'll just note publicly that this was done collaboratively with KNEA and the Calendar Committee. So this is a recommendation, a joint recommendation.
Some more. Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or further discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Board, next item is Agenda 8. This is new business. There is no action being requested tonight on any of these items. They are all up for information tonight for you to review and ask any questions, if there are any, tonight. Please, if you have questions after tonight, send those to Dr. Stubblefield. We'll make sure to get your questions answered and sent to the full board so that we all have the same information. Are there any questions on items? And any of the items under new business, Item 8, in our agenda? Any items... Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Just Item C, K-12 Insight. Could someone just kind of explain that a little further?
So a few years ago, you saw two demonstrations. One was through Qualtrics and one was K-12 Insight that we, it is a communication customer service tool where we can keep better track of complaints or questions or concerns that comes in, that provides a dashboard that you all have, you would have your board view of to see what progress was being made and when it was closed out. It's one layer of it. But it also provides a way for people to get real-time information with, if they just go to our website and say, "Where's the policy on X?" It would automatically give them the policy without them having to search for the policy. And it's been a few years since you've actually seen the demo. But we, Kansas City, Missouri School District and North Kansas City School District both have leveraged this tool for several years. And the feedback that we received is that, as far as the customer experience, when we think of our parents in the community, it really streamlines it. And it actually allows us to give you real-time data around issues, concerns. And it just helps us to be better communicators and for people to access information in a better way. It definitely will help us around those high-peak times of enrollment, summer school and those kind of things because it just streamlines a lot of processes that we have in place and we can give real-time data around.
Does it require training to manipulate it?
Not for the people who are the outside users. On the backside, so when your dashboard is set up, you'll have a login, you'll see it. We'll do that training for each user group that has to do it, yes. But not for somebody who comes to our website to use it. It doesn't require training. It just requires them to type something into a box and whatever their question is, and it'll direct them or notify whomever is responsible for it as well so they can follow up immediately.
So using the words, implementation date is upon purchase or what?
Yeah. We would start with the communication group. We would want it up and running by, fully by the time the school year starts. So yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brownlee Page, did you have a question?
Yeah. You said by the time the school years start. And I know in previous years, we've had problems with enrollment. I don't know what happened because a lot of things didn't go through smoothly. So would it start this summer?
Yes. We'll build it out. And by the time the enrollment and those things, that will be our first build out. So that's our goal, to do that.
And how many people would it take to monitor this system to make sure that it's working right?
So each level has a different level of responsibility, but primarily the communications department. And they will be notified. Like if it's something related to a school, like if Sligo comes up, the principal, certain people will automatically get notification. But there are some of us that can see all of them and see what's in progress. But primarily, it'll be the organizational development and the communication department.
Because I think there's still some problems when you call up. This is something different. It's hard to get somebody. And the machine doesn't give out all the different numbers. And if you don't really know how the system works, then you struggle to figure out, "Who do I call?"
Yeah. So one of the advantages of this, there is an element where if people are calling people, you can, and it's not dependent on like the landlines. Phones are actually ringing to their computer or other devices. So we can set that part up as well so that people are not going into voicemails or other people are notified so they can respond more quickly. But it'll help us track that a lot better, that component.
Okay. Because that's still a problem.
Yeah.
And people still call and complain about it. Well, how do I know to go to this department? So no, but that's what you should have pushed. So still, hopefully, it'll resolve that issue. But that's still a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions? We'll start on just the Item C, since we're talking about that. Any questions on Item C? Jump back. Any questions on Item A? Questions on Item B? All right. As questions come up, please share those with Dr. Stubblefield. These may come back before the board at a later date for potential action. So we will continue with our agenda. We are at Item 9. We will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay. Good evening. I just have a few quick announcements. First, I want to thank the Foundation of Excellence for awarding a record number of scholarships this year. The foundation awarded more than $100,000 in scholarships during a special event held on April 30. These scholarship funds were made possible through the foundation's annual golf tournament and generous endowments. So thank you to the foundation for providing those scholarships to our students. Also, want to say thank you to all the students who participated in our annual "Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader?" event last Friday. It was another exciting and energetic celebration. A special thanks to Christine Schoenberg and our amazing volunteers and our entire PE department for making this event a success. Also, the KC KPS Police Department, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and our partner law enforcement agencies, just for all that they do to make sure that we all can, those of us who run or walk, can do it safely. Just so you're aware of how fast our fifth graders are, our fastest girl ran two miles in 16 minutes and 41 seconds. And the fastest boy ran two miles in 13 minutes and 56 seconds. I won't share my time. I was faster than some of the fifth graders, not all of them. I think my time was like 24. So, but I also want to thank the Foundation of Excellence and our educational partner, ClassLink, because through their generous donations, we were able to give the top three girls and the top three boys each a $500 scholarship that will be presented at their, the Foundation's of Excellence, Partners in Excellence Breakfast this fall. Also, want a shout out to Wyandotte High School for being recognized as the 24-25 Project Lead the Way Distinguished School. Wyandotte is one of only seven high schools in Kansas to receive this prestigious honor. This recognition celebrates Wyandotte's commitment to expanding student access, engagement, and achievement in the project Lead the Way Computer Science, Biomedical Science, and Engineering Pathways. And it's a true reflection of the hard work of our students and the dedication of our educators and the district's support in providing innovative, real-world learning experiences. So congratulations to Wyandotte High School for that accomplishment. And we're excited to share that the Herbie Hancock Institute of Jazz is bringing its acclaimed peer-to-peer jazz education program to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools starting tomorrow. The unique initiative blends live performances with interactive education through engaging performances by the Institute National Peer-to-Peer Jazz Quintet. KC KPS is one of the only eight high school districts nationwide selected to take part in this week-long series running from May 14 through 16. The tour will conclude with a public concert on Saturday, May 17, at 5:00 p.m. at The Blue Room in Kansas City, Missouri. And thank you to the Herbie Hancock Institute for helping our scholars connect with the rich history of jazz and the power of music as a learning tool. There is a performance that will be held at Sumner High School on Friday. We'll make sure we share out the time for that event. And this is just a reminder that graduations start this Thursday. And so congratulations to all of our seniors and their families. And we look forward to celebrating with you Thursday, Friday, and Sunday.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. And I'll just piggyback off of that again. Congratulations to everyone. And thank you to all of our staff and the team who makes graduation work and flow smooth and great for our families and scholars to enjoy that celebration. So thank you to the team and the staff who all helped with that. Board, if you haven't picked up your graduation regalia, Ms. Smith has it here for you. So please make sure you take that home so you have it ready for the graduations. And Dr. Lucero did send out an email to the board with instructions and information about graduations and who to contact in case you have any questions or need some additional information. So please make sure you review your email for that. So thank you to everybody who was helping with that. Just a couple of other items I'll mention. I had the pleasure of going to Brooke Gibbs at Wyandotte Herceceramics class a couple of weeks ago and just sit in with the ceramics class and the drawing class. And they did a phenomenal job. Actually, Ms. Stewart and I had to sit there and be human models for about 10 minutes as the students drew us. So we had to sit still right in front of the class. And that was the longest 10 minutes, I swear. But it was a great time. And we've got some talented... I'm not gonna share those. We've got some talented artists. They kept them. They're probably hanging in the room. So go check it out at Wyandotte High School. So thank you for that invitation to Ms. Gibbs. Also, thank you to Ms. Maxwell and Ms. Murray over at Earl Watson Jr., Early Childhood Center. I got a chance to visit and take a tour and have conversations and see our littles and just really enjoy watching what our instructors do at the early childhood level and the investments that we're making for those scholars. They're gonna be matriculating through our entire schools and in our district. And it's just, it reminds me of how much we need to continue to invest in those littles, in our facilities, in our staff who do the amazing work that they do with our littles and those families. And to, if you need a smile on your face or if you're having a tough day and want to warm your heart, just go visit and sit with the kids. You'll have a phenomenal time with them. And I'll just lift up the piece around conscious discipline that they're really lifting up and working with. I think it's such an important job that they do around how they work with and talk with our students. And that conscious discipline approach was just amazing to learn about that they really use at that school. I'll give a shout out to Mr. Earl Watson Jr. as well. He was at the Cinco de Mayo event at Central Avenue and spoke about his experience with the district, being a member of our community and always does a great job representing not just himself and his family, but his relationship here in KCK and with the school district. So shout out to him for that. Thank you to the foundation for the great work on the Excellence in Education last week. Another great event to all the staff, student support, staff department. Great job manning the event and making sure that it went, again, smooth Great job manning the event and making sure that it went, again, smooth for all of our families. Thank you. It was such a great celebration. So appreciate all of you who are involved. And congratulations to all of our families and to that committee that continues to work hard to make sure that we celebrate our students of the month. So thank you to everyone involved with that. Last, just a plug for the Jamie Craig Food Truck Festival next week on the 22nd, from 11 to 3. That's being hosted by the Wyandotte High School PTSA. It's been, it's their third annual event. It's a great event to come out and celebrate the legacy of Ms. Jamie Craig and to see the students who really put on that, that festival and after school. And it's just a great event. It's fun, it's festive, and the kids are really taking ownership and leadership in that. So it's, I'd encourage you to come out and support that event. So with that, I'll open up to the floor, to the rest of the board, for anything else you want to share. Ms. Russell.
Yeah. I will just echo remarks already provided, but just my verbal appreciation for our nurses, our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers. The end of the year is such a busy time. I also should say our PE teachers. There's a lot of field day fitness activities going on as well. But just really grateful for the staff that we have here at KC KPS. And just, the end of the year is always a fun time. And as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, the board has a busy few days ahead, as well as some of our cabinet staff. And so just want to send a special shout out to Dr. Lucero and Noemi, who are working countlessly and tirelessly to make sure that they pull off a grand celebration for our scholars. They deserve it. That's why we're all here, is this moment that we're having right now or that we will experience this week and how memorable we want it to be for our students and our families, because they deserve this. And as Ms. Page said, we are getting better every day. But graduation is always a reminder of the work that we are doing. And our students are successful and they will be something. Lastly, I apologize, I was tardy today. I just wanted to publicly also just say my thank you to Ms. Drew and her commitment to this board. If she is somewhere, I know that if I'm going somewhere, she's somewhere. And she just has been a joy. And I know folks love to see her out and about dancing and doing all the things. Y'all missed it at the retirement reception. If you wasn't there, you was in for a treat. She really gave us one. So thank you, Ms. Drew, for your commitment and the eight years that you dedicated to this board and the work. I know that she really, her baby this year was the academic committee and family engagement. And while we still have some work to do around what faces looks like and what that culture commitment around the district looks like, I believe that we are on the right page, thanks to her leadership and also those involved in the committee. And last, but certainly not least, I continuously, Wayne probably thinks I get on his nerves more than my kids get on my nerves. But Wayne does such a good job. If you've never had the opportunity to work with Wayne on a bid or something, I just would say, you want to work with Wayne. And he does a great job of wrangling in all of the wagons and all of the people. And it's always a great experience. He feeds us well, too. And so Wayne, thank you, thank you, thank you. You are irreplaceable, in my opinion, in our district. You have so much knowledge and understanding and flexibility. And I really just want you to know that I personally appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Mylan.
I just want to echo Randy, what you just said, Mr. President. But the Foundation of Excellence, I had an opportunity to attend there at Home Field a few days ago. And you all just to observe and the thrill and the joy and the pleasure just to see the children get rewarded. Two of the children had their grandparents there. They were so enlightened and joyful to see their child. Who, she stated to me, the child had been struggling for a few years, but had made all A's and just get rewarded. And she was just so joyful, she was almost in tears. Y'all, that's what we're about. When I say we're about, when we talk about the children, to reward them and award them for their, for their, for their excellence, when they, when their achievements, let me say that. So it's something that we don't need to just take for granted. It was a pleasure and honor just to see that from all ages. And just to see the children that are dressed up like they're going to the prom, walk across the stage, have no idea what they, what's going on. They know they're going to get a certificate. And they don't know who they're going to shake hands with, just to go across. It's just, it's a lifetime experience for them. And it's just, it's just a positive aspect that we just need to continue with. And I just want to say thank you that I enjoy seeing that with the young folk from all ages, from the middle school, from the grade, elementary and all of that. You just get a, just get a joy of seeing this, the small children, the elementary children. It's overwhelming and joyful. I just want to just share that. That's what it's all about, education for the young folk, to reward them, their achievements. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. It's Brownlee Page.
On the 24th, I attended the Teacher of the Year Award Program, which was excellent. And then on the 30th, we had our teacher negotiation. Goheen is hanging in there and pulling it all together. On May 1st, I attended the KC KPS Retirement. And I think that's important, because we have people who work hard. And they're, they're 48, 43, which is unbelievable. I commend them for that. And regardless of what position, whether it's transportation, teacher, cafeteria worker, they all worked hard for us. And it's nice to see them enjoy their retirement. And then on the 5th, we had our board retreat. And on the 7th, we had our aspiring principal program, which, again, was exceptional. And as well as the retirement for Mary Stewart, Paula Nickam, and I can't remember the two other individuals. But there was four staff who retired from Wyandotte. And again, it's just nice to get out when you can.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Okay. Thank you, board. So at this time, we've reached our executive session portion of our agenda. Board would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Jones for 10 minutes, going in at 8:20.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda, Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Allen Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne.
Wayne, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight.
Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight.
Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight.
Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight.
Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, um, ten minutes, um, to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at eight forty-eight. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for ten minutes to include Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones going in at 8:48. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved. I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mylin moved and I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please.
Motion to return to open session, please.
Motion to return to open session, please.
Moved by Ms. Clark.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mylan. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you. A motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma to include Mr. Gohein and Dr. Stubblefield for 10 minutes, going in at 9:18.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Russell. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.[1046.14]
...